You're on, okay. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you back to our Board of Selectmen meeting for March 19th, 2019. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our apologies for the late start. We have had pressing matters to deal with this evening in the executive session. So, we'd like to start, first of all, with our firefighters. We have some new firefighters to meet and greet.
Hello. Here for a quick meet and greet. We actually have five new firefighters. They started March 4th. Four of these positions were funded from the SAFER grant. One is absent for taking a college exam tonight. They just finished their two-week orientation this past Friday, and they all have been assigned to shifts and have started working. So, the one that's not here is Paul Sparrow. Paul lives in Wareham, has experience working for Stat Ambulance in New Bedford. He's a U.S. Army Reservist Combat Medic, and Paul has no firefighting experience yet. Closest to me is Sean Dean. Sean's from Sandwich, has two years of full-time experience with Sandwich and Wallfleet Fire Department, and has been to the Mass Fire Academy to become a Certified firefighter, one and two graduate. Sean has recently made an offer on a house in Yarmouth. Nathan Courier is next. Nathan lives in Plymouth, has worked a few years in the Fall River Fire Department for EMS, and he has some firefighter training, but is currently not certified. Nathan is also looking for a home in Yarmouth currently. Mike Watts. Mike lives in Yarmouth. He was one of our call firefighters. Mike has experience with working with a local ambulance company as an EMT, and more recently as a paramedic. And Mike is a graduate of the Barnstable County firefighter, one and two program, but he will also attend the Fire Academy. Last, on the end there, is Othane Rance. Othane lives in Dennis, just over the town line, and within our callback area. Othane has 10 years' experience as a paramedic with Lower Cape Ambulance, and Othane does not have any firefighter experience, but he's eager to learn. Paul, Othane, Mike, and Nathan will all attend the Mass Fire Academy in November. We'll send two, stagger a few weeks, and then two more. That's the earliest we could get them into the academy. That's it, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you to the taxpayers and the board. This is our first manpower increase, like I've stated before, since 2003, and it's greatly appreciated that we have these extra members now, one per shift. That's going to make a big difference going forward, and so we really appreciate the support of the board, as well as the taxpayers of Yarmouth. So, thank you again.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to meet new firefighters and police force members, and great to have them in our community at this point. We'll open the meeting at this time to public comments. I see a couple of hands raised. Mr. Chairman, yes, please.
Evening. Barry Clayman, 90 Beacon Street, here in South Yarmouth. And I noticed that at 8:15, it's scheduled to discuss the school district agreement discussion and potential vote. I certainly hope it does come to a vote tonight. I am here because I can't be, you're running a little bit late, and I just can't be here. So, my point in being here, and I know there are others here with me, that want to recognize the school committee's commitment and its actions in coming up with the revised format for the funding of the D.Y. school system. So, I certainly hope you've all had a chance to read it and absorb it, and are willing to come to a vote tonight in a positive vein, so that we can move ahead, of course, with the construction of the school, because I know that's a hinge pin for some of you on the board. So, with due respect, I would ask you to be serious about this, because I know we had a date of April 1st, now people are talking about April 11th, and now people are talking about going into May with extensions from the state. From my perspective and other people's perspective, being serious about this, it would be best if we even accomplish this by April 1st. So, with that, I'll leave that to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Good evening.
My name is Rosemarie Marino, District 1, and I'm here this evening to sing the praises of the Yarmouth School Committee, and to thank them for their enormous effort to find a solution for the present stalemate between Yarmouth and Dennis. I have read the amended version of the agreement between the towns and realized that an inordinate amount of time and effort has gone into its completion. Overshadowing every attempt to find a workable solution to the regional school district's longstanding difficulties is the fact that only 16 working days, that is, days without Saturdays and Sundays being counted, remain until April 11th, at which time we stand to lose $44 million of state funds to provide adequate school facilities for our middle school children. So, I and many others are here this evening, I assume, to urge you to withdraw your suit, which jeopardizes receipt of the state funds. Show us that you care for the children of Dennis and Yarmouth, as well as the reputation of our town, and that you are willing to work towards a solution without the sword of Damocles above our heads. If you persevere with the foolishness of suing a committee of your own town, we will hold each of you personally responsible. Thank you.
My name is Roland Place, 53 West Woods in Yarmouth, Florida. I recently moved to town of April of last year. I want to comment that I too would like you to dismiss the lawsuit over this issue in the school, and I wanted to urge you to come to a vote on this issue this evening, expedite the process, so we don't lose the funding. The other comment I just want to make after being here is I'm severely disappointed in the board's decision, not with all of our funding constraints, not to take advantage of the millions we could have gotten over the issue of Cape Wind in the table. Thank you.
Joyce Flynn. I have read the school agreement online, and I think it seems like a good solution, and I hope it will be ratified. But I'm here about energy. The two members of Energy Committee are currently exploring an opportunity that would enable us to get and print up marketing materials and also informational materials on solar photovoltaic and solar thermal. So, we're going to be looking into that over the next very short period of time. If this sounds like something that would be of interest to you for either a residence or a small business, if you could let me know, my email's joyce, J-O-Y-C-E dot Flynn at gmail dot com. The other way to easily reach us would be, we have an Energy Committee meeting two weeks from today at 4:30 in Room A upstairs, and you could catch myself and other people who will be working on this either just before that or just after that. And of course, you're always welcome at any Yarmouth Energy Committee meeting, and we always serve carbon life forms refreshments when they do come. Thank you.
Vida Morris. Please do not allow anybody to conflate the lawsuit with anything else, like the budget or the school district agreement. That stands on its own merits, and it has to be something that has to be straightened out. I don't know whether we need to go all the way through adjudication, but we have to find a way to find out why no other two-town district has ever used that particular section. It's because it is kind of incomplete, almost, compared to anything else in the other sections, and it has to be straightened out. But do not allow, because otherwise, the people will say correctly that, yeah, you instituted that lawsuit only to, you know, get to the table on the district agreement or the budget or whatever all else. So, please don't allow to conflate it with anything else.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Nickomelo from the Village of Basserville in the beautiful town of Yarmouth. I stand before you this evening to acknowledge the, 10 days ago, we had our beautiful parade in town, and being part of the committee, we want to thank each and every one of you, everybody involved with the town who helped us put on the parade. It was a fabulous event, and we had great weather, and without you folks and staff and everyone else, it wouldn't have happened. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Jack McCormick, Precinct 3. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me. Just a couple of quick items. I know that you will be considering the Community Preservation Act items tonight, and I want to speak in favor of the drive-in site. As a member of the Community and Economic Development Committee, and a representative from that committee to two other committees, one of which is the drive-in site, I'd want you to know that I have been a property owner and a taxpayer since 1957, and some of my taxes went to paying for that site, which is laying dormant for 30 years, and it's about time we did something with it. One other item, I hope everyone here, while we have a captive audience, will go upstairs and look at that marvelous architectural display from the Taylor Bray Farm. It's just miraculous. And all you people at home, too, please make time to come to Town Hall and look at that exhibit and visit the farm itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to a public hearing with regard to Daggett's Liquors.
Hello. My name's Joe Norris. I own Daggett's Liquors, and I'm seeking approval to move my store location from 1071 Route 28 to 1078 Route 28.
Okay, Joe. First thing we'll do is read the legal notice into the record, and then you can go on and elaborate on what you just said, okay?
Yes.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth, has received an application from Sierra and Doing Businesses Daggett's Liquors, Joseph Norris, manager, for a change of location of their annual all-alcoholic package store license from the current location at 1071 Route 28 South Yarmouth to 1078-1080 Route 28 South Yarmouth. The premises is a retail store space with a shopping plaza, 6,850 square feet, spread between seven rooms with a small upstairs office. Retail space is split into two areas, number 1078 for selling space, 2,898 square feet, and number 1080 for bottle and can redemption, 1,100 square feet. The remaining 2,852 square feet is split into five rooms for inventory storage. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, March 19th, in the hearing room at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28 South Yarmouth. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6:00 P.M. Written comments will be accepted in the Selectmen's office at Town Hall until 4:30 on Friday, March 15th, 2019, and verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. Okay, Joe, why don't you tell us, I mean, I understand historically, that business was in the plaza-
That's correct.
-where you intend to relocate, is that right?
Yeah. The reason we're asking to move is our current landlord, Ryan's Family Amusement, which we share the building with, is expanding their business and thus taking over the entire building, leaving us with no space to operate. So, we found, oddly enough, the location we used to be in, in, I think it was 1997, and it works for us, and we hope it works for the town.
Okay, so, I also noticed that you have a sketch plan attached to your application-
Yes.
-showing the layout of the bottle redemption, the storage areas, inventory storage, and the retail sales, which is just under 3,000 square feet. Before I go to the board, is there anyone in the public that wants to be heard on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll go to the board. Anyone on the board have any questions? No, Tracy? Norm?
I'm fine, thank you.
Make a motion, close the public hearing.
Yeah, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the application as presented.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the application as presented without further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Good luck.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you so much.
Get the green cards from you?
Yes.
Give them to our town administrator. Thank you, Joe. You're-
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We'll move on at this point to the CPA Articles Review. We have the committee. Available, okay. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michael Barry. I'm the program coordinator for the CPA program. I work in the Community Development Office in Town Hall. I'll be speaking on behalf of Gary Ellis, our committee chairperson, who was not able to get here, but may come in at any moment. So, I hope that you all received our memo that outlined the articles. We'll go through them rather quickly, pausing for any questions that you might have, and we'll pass off between members of the committee. I'll begin with Article 31. As you're probably familiar, this is a housekeeping article, where each year, by legislation, we must divide up the proceeds that are coming in under the CPA Act, 10% into the housing reserve, 10% into the historic reserve, 10% into the open space reserve. In addition to that, there is 5% that can be set aside for the workings of the committee. So, that is typical of what happens every year. We're anticipating about $2 million in revenue this year. That's close to what it was last year. Some of that is coming from the state, in a state match of about 11 and 1/2% guaranteed now. This past year, we had some proceeds in addition, because there was a surplus in state revenues, and some of that went to the CPA fund, so the town got about 21% this year. It only guaranteed 11 and 1/2% for the coming year. So, that is Article 31.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, how would you like us to handle this going forward? Would you like recommendations as we go along, or?
I think so, and it probably would be easier if we deal with them one by one.
Recommend that we approve Article 31 as presented.
I get it.
Okay. All those in favor? Any discussion at this point? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Mike, just an interruptor saying, might introduce your committee with you here tonight, or allow them to introduce themselves, so everyone at home knows who is here?
Most of them will be speaking, and they perhaps can introduce themselves when it's their turn, if that's all right.
That'd be fine, sure.
At the end, on your right is Mary Ann Walsh. She is not speaking, but she's a member of the committee as well.
Okay. All right.
So, we'll take up the housing ones next. So, Article 31 appropriates funds for the Housing Trust. This will be the 13th year for the Housing Trust support. Yarmouth now has 596 affordable housing units, which is approximately 5% of the town's year-round housing stock.
Make a motion, we approve Article 32 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's good to see, I mean, finally, we're away from the 4% number. We've got a 5, so that's great, that we're moving in the right direction. It's wonderful to see that.
So close.
That's great.
We'll move on. Article 33 has three projects associated with affordable housing. Two of those projects are repeat providers. Project A is with the Howard Ecumenical Council for Housing. This is the fourth year of support to income-eligible residents with financial and technical assistance for structural repairs to homes.
Make a motion, we approve Article 33 as presented.
Have a second.
Question? Are there three pieces to Article 33?
This is Project A that we're addressing right now.
So, are we gonna?
I think we should wait until we get through all three, A, B, and C. Why don't you go ahead?
Yes, Project B is with Hands of Hope. This organization has provided rental assistance to low-income residents, so they can avoid evictions. Over 45 families each year receive some financial assistance to prevent evictions. Project C is a new application. FORWARD is a nonprofit organization called Friends or Relatives with Autism and Related Disabilities. The town of Dennis has donated land and approved $500,000 in CPA funds. The state of Massachusetts has provided $1 million towards this project. The towns of Barnstable, Mashpee, and Chatham have all approved CPA grants. The project will house eight adults from Cape Cod with autism, and will be managed 24/7 by capabilities.
I still make a motion, we recommend Article 33.
Sure.
Okay. Do we have a second at this point?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. You know, I have to say, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust, I think, has done a wonderful job moving everything forward, and pleased to see the progress. We see the progress along Route 28, very visibly to the town at this point, and I think that for many years was something that was a real contentious issue, was, you know, the look of Route 28, and I think it's improving day by day, so it's great.
And next, I'd like to introduce Beverly Bashan, who will talk about our historic projects.
I'm going to talk about Article 34. 34 is three historic preservation projects. Project A would provide CPA funds to the Historic Society of Old Yarmouth for the purchase of a digital scanner with the purpose of scanning a large backlog of historic photos of Yarmouth scenes to be placed in the searchable archives of the Historic Society. Sorry. Project B provides CPA funds to the Historic New Church Preservation Foundation for the restoration of the external facade of the building on Route 6A, and for a climate control system that would allow the community use of the building year-round, and would help with the preservation of previous indoor preservation work. Project C would provide CPA funds for design and engineering study of the historic preservation requirement of the barn at Taylor Bray Farm. The barn is an aging historic structure. It's in need of repair to the foundation and the exterior structure. It is the last of the major rehabilitation work needed at the farm.
Make a motion, we recommend Article 34 as presented.
Second.
I would like to introduce Paul Huggins, and he will talk about Open Space Project.
First of all, we haven't voted yet. In a second, I have questions, please.
Yes.
I'd like to know the totals, if this funding were to be approved, the total amounts that have been granted over the years to both the New Church and to Bray Farm?
I don't have that with me. New Church going into this was about, I don't want to guess at this point, it was in several hundred thousand. Bray Farm, we did a project early on for the farmhouse rehabilitation of that, back in around 2010, that was over 600,000. There have been repairs to the fencing, there's been repairs to the caretaker cottage. You're probably up in the 800,000. Bray Farm, of course, is town-owned.
Right.
Excuse me. Point of order. Point of order. Could we hear the dollar figures that go along with these proposals? Because we don't, you have it in your mind, but we don't.
All right, thank you. Would you like to go over that?
Sure, I can present those. So, the request by the Historical Society of Old Yarmouth for the purchase of a digital scanner for the photographs is $10,128. That was the request, and that was the recommendation from the Community Preservation Committee. For the New Church Preservation Foundation, for the exterior facade work and the installation of climate control, $168,551. Both of those are coming from the historic reserve funds that already exist. The last one, for Taylor Bray Farm, to do design and engineering of the new barn, or repaired barn, would be $50,000.
I have a couple more on, if I may.
Sure. Go ahead.
The-
Mike?
I'm sorry. The categories of appropriation are historic preservation. Article 34 is historic resource. Is that just a typo?
It's no difference in the nomenclature. The official name is the Historic Reserve. That's what's the wording in the article itself. The title, Historic Resources, is just another wording for that.
One more question and then a comment. Does Taylor Bray Farm have any source of funding other than Community Preservation Act?
They do three fundraising events a year. So, in June, they do a sheep shearing festival. In October, same time as a seaside festival, they have a fall festival. And then, just before the Christmas period, they do another festival. All of those raise funds for the care of the animals, and that's the main work of that foundation.
I intend to support this, but I think, this has come up with other things in the past, and I think that not only do we have the right to know, but the taxpayers in the town's right to know, have the right to know, a rolling total, because I think that there are two, three, you know, maybe one or two more projects in town that are heavily funded by the Community Preservation Act. And I would like to know to what extent they're funded, not only how much they've gotten in total over the years, what percentage of their overall project budgets have been funded by this and by other sources? Just seems like we have frequent flyers here, and I just, I'd like to know, and I think the taxpayers would like to know as well.
I think it's a reasonable question. I, you know, and, you know, I think it would be important to come to town meeting, I think, prepared with that information about, as Eric described, I think, both questions, you know, the total amount that's been spent, and also of their total budget, how much has been supplied typically by CPA funding. I think that is important information, so.
We have that information in Community Development- We have that information in community development. I don't have it in my materials right now.
I would expect it at town meetings, so you'll want to be prepared for that.
Right.
And for the record, there's two newly born adorable little sheep over there. If anybody hasn't been by to see it, they were born, I think, a little bit early this year in March.
I guess I have a question regarding the Yarmouth New Church Preservation Project. It's, can you describe the ownership of that facility?
I believe we may have someone here tonight from the facility, if you'd like to come up.
My name is Mary Anna Gresty, and I'm president of the Board of Directors of the Yarmouth New Church Preservation Foundation. We are a nonprofit preservation foundation, a non-denominational, nonreligious volunteer group of citizens of the town of Yarmouth, who about 15 years ago took ownership of that property from the Swedenborgen Church with the sole intent of making it a destination for cultural performance and visual art for the town of Yarmouth. It's owned by the Preservation Foundation.
Okay. All right. And so it's not, it's not an active church?
It has not been for over 15 years.
So I'm just looking at it in terms of interior climate control. You know, typically, we've limited our participation with buildings to the exteriors of buildings. So I'm wondering if this is a departure from what CPA, our CPA funding has typically done in the past.
If I may, Mike, do you want me to speak tonight?
I'll speak to some of that. I think it was two years ago, we did a dehumidifier for the Cultural Center in Bass River. So it's not necessarily a departure. We've done interior work at the New Church as well, but maybe you can talk to that, too, about what was done on the interior. In the design now, as with the climate control, we're going to preserve a lot of the paint that was done on a very sensitive interior there. So we have done it before. Certainly, at Taylor Bray Farm, that was gutted and fixed inside and out.
Right. That's a town property, however. It's not a privately owned, and whether this is privately owned by a foundation, nonprofit, it's not owned by the town. So there's somewhat of a distinction in that regard. And, you know, I think that's, you know, I think I've heard the discussion with regard to a couple of different churches that we've done historic preservation on, and the limitations that we've observed with regard to the interiors of those buildings, in particular, being maintained by their membership, as opposed to requiring CPA funding, or applying for CPA funding.
Right. And certainly CPC did take that into account here, but this is not a church. It's a meeting house.
Right.
So there is a different definition for this facility.
And if I may, since I'm standing here, our commitment is to this being a public community center. It's simply a church in its history, not in its present use. We have events for each holiday that are committed to opening the building to the public for free. We were the spearheaded of the Halloween event, which is now an annual event on the green. We, I would consider us to be more of a community historic property. We open the building every Saturday. Our volunteers welcome it to all the community. So I think it's very different than a religious building, where we're historically restoring an interior. We have received grants for a concert series that will happen this summer. So we are actively pursuing making this a year-round property that every day, there would be a concert or an event, a yoga class in the lower level. This is our goal for the north side. So in addition to using the climate control to preserve the investment that's already been made by both us and the town in the interior finishes, this building, we're working diligently this year to figure out what we should rename it, because we want it to really be a cultural destination. And everything that we do is working towards that goal. The climate control is critical. To speak also to the fundraising matches, those numbers are in our presentation. And I'm sorry, I didn't bring the exact digits with me today, but we will bring those to town meeting and be happy to support the history that we have spent more in private fundraising by far than we have come and asked. So although I realize this is our second ask, we have worked diligently, for example, to provide water to the building. It didn't have any water, not even a sink. And we personally fundraised over $100,000 to put a Title V septic, handicap restrooms, et cetera, all of this with a long-term goal. So I hope that you would support that vision that we have.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I might add, I was reminded by a colleague that at the Banks Hallet House on the north side, CPC did approve funding for an HVAC system there. That was eight to 10 years ago.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion at this point?
We have a motion.
You did make a motion? Okay. Well, it's been so long, I've forgotten. All right. Any further discussion or questions? All right. Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Article 35.
Hello, I'm Paul Huggins. I'm on the CPC from the, I'm the representative of the Conservation Commission. Article 35 is an opportunity for the town to acquire almost six acres of vacant land in an environmentally sensitive location bordering Water Department property. The property contains wetlands and serves as an active wildlife corridor. As negotiations are still underway, we cannot talk about some aspects of this purchase, but we are prepared to address other non-sensitive aspects of the project. Any questions?
This property was for sale not too long ago, right? It's just to the north side of Starbuck, as you're coming up Station Avenue, right?
Right.
It's, I think that's probably why it didn't sell. It's primarily wetland.
Okay. So this is being proposed. Now, what is the appropriation? How much is the appropriation?
The ask was $250,000. The town is quite a negotiator, and they're in negotiation. So we can't talk price at this point.
We were going to have an executive session on that next week at next week's meeting as it relates to the similar process we went through last year, where we'd ask the board for some parameters on negotiated price. It's inactive now, but we'll have something for you next week.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I'd like a motion to approve Article 35.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Article 36.
Hi, I'm Dorcas McGurran. I also represent the Recreation Commission. And Article 36 has two recreation articles. The first one would provide CPA funds for final design and engineering of Flax Pond Recreation Area in line with the master recreation plan approved by the Recreation Commission. This design and engineering work is needed to plan the construction of tennis, volleyball, and basketball courts, a natural turf field, walkways, shade structures, and landscaping and stormwater control. Still no splash pad, huh? Hmm? Still no splash pad. We're going to be talking about Splash Park when it comes to Sandy Pond.
If I might add...
I want to highlight the four final designs of Flax Pond. We're happy to say this will finish off the project.
For the public, Mr. Chairman, this is $200,000.
Okay. All right. We have a motion? I'm sorry. Let you continue then with Project B.
Project B would provide the remaining funds needed to complete pickleball courts at Flax Pond. This is a follow-on request from last year's town meeting. After approval last year, bids went out to perform the work, but those bids came in higher than last year's estimated cost, due in part to the impact of higher tariffs on construction materials. And the amount is $100,000.
So what kind of construction materials are we talking about? I mean, is it pavement? Is it...
I believe it's the asphalt is one of the big things. And when I say higher, came in higher, it was sticker shock higher.
Okay.
What number is sticker shock higher? How much higher?
Couldn't be more than $100,000. No. It's roughly around $70,000. But we also are building in contingencies to that because we certainly don't want to come back to the well a third time on this project. But we are, actually, if you look at the history of recreation projects with CPC, you'll see that we very often give back funds to them and do not use the maximum amount that we're requesting.
Are there other questions on this?
Could somebody explain why the Finance Committee only voted $70,000?
I can tell you the nature of the questions that they were asking me there. We were not present for the vote. Again, as I say, it's $70,000 over what we had anticipated. And we had the other $30,000 in there just basically as a contingency, given what happened to us before. The Finance Committee had many questions regarding whether we were doing fundraising for this project in the short months of October to May from town meeting, which I didn't, I said on behalf of the committee was not a realistic expectation. And I also went on to tell them that this money is there in recreation, is in the community preservation for this purpose. We can't help what happened in the country as far as the tariffs are concerned. And the $70,000, what we're hoping, we don't want to come back to the well again. We certainly expect that we're only going to spend $70,000, but we want to have the contingency in there just in case, when the bids go out again, something else happens. We've been assured they will not, but we've been hurt once. We want to be careful.
My understanding is they cut the contingency. They, I believe, Mr. Colby might have the exact dollar value that we have the contractor on a contract with. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Jeff Colby, DPW Director. It's just under $70,000. So I believe the thinking is the Finance Committee felt that a contingency wasn't necessary at this stage of the project. The project is nearing completion. There is still a top course of pavement that's needed, as well as fencing and loaming and seeding. Certainly, if the money's not used, it will be returned, as it was explained earlier.
So Jeff, is this going to be the same contractor? You're going to have to go out to bid again, re-mobilize and all that?
The contractor can be used. We have on site. We have an active bid that was solicited for the entire project. Portions were removed from the contract that we currently have signed, but that bid is still a valid bid to complete the work. And so that $70,000 should be sufficient at this point.
Wait a minute. Well...
So how did you issue the initial contract without having the funds for it?
The top course of pavement, the color coating of the court, as well as the loaming and seeding, was removed from the contract. The amount that was signed was the schedule of values for the project that was consistent with the funds we had available.
Okay. So, but you don't have to rebid the difference?
Because we have an active bid. As long as the contractor holds that bid that was part of their active bid, those schedule of values can be added back in with the change order.
I'm confused. The ask is for $300,000. Finance Committee only recommended $70,000.
No, it's, they're two different projects. It's $100,000 that we asked for. And this is for the pickleball court?
Right here.
Yeah, but this is for two pieces. You got $200 for the, $100 for the pickleball.
Yeah. So there's $300,000 total, of which Finance Committee recommended $70,000. So that's a $230,000 deduction.
No. My understanding on that is that it was specifically to Part B, that they were talking to $70,000, not to the whole project.
Something here that indicates that to me.
It's not clear in what we have in front of us.
Jeff, can you shed any light on that, on whether that $70,000 is a recommendation for Parts A and B, or just for Part B?
My understanding is just for Part B. They didn't recommend Part A.
They did not recommend?
At all. Correct. That's correct.
So it is 70 total.
Yeah. Exactly. And do we know why that, is that news to you?
I'm not surprised. We've had a lot of pushback from the Finance Committee each year that we've gone before them. I actually can't figure out why, because according to community preservation, we sit on an equal footing with also historic, open space, and housing. And yet, every year, we're the ones in recreation that have the pushback about why are we spending that much money, or what kind of fundraising are we doing? And the whole purpose of that act, I just remind you, is for the areas that are, when push comes to shove in town, are not the ones that are going to get afforded, get provided the funding. Because, of course, fire, police, and so forth are much more important. So this is our way of being able to fund these projects. And one of the things that we're going to be able to get out of all of this, on Project A, for instance, it will give us the playing fields that we need for the older kids, the tweens. And as we all know right now, that's a very vulnerable population out there. And Flax Pond, goes without saying, has been an excellent project. And we will support this and want to see it completed, and the kids have all of the opportunities that they need there. And as far as Project B is concerned, that involves pickleball, who have been patiently waiting. And we all expected at town meeting last year that that would be done. We'd be able to open that park as of this season, and they're geared up to offer intergenerational play. And unfortunately, we got sidetracked by surprise tariffs. So recreation is just as important, and it's fun. We all need a little fun in town. We certainly need a little fun right now in the world.
I was only asking because I couldn't understand what was going on here. But, so A was not, Finance Committee said zero to A and $70,000 to B.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. What was, I mean, there must have been some discussion with regard to how the Finance Committee felt about Project A. There must have been some detail in their review.
When the CPC, it was in front of Finance Committee, we presented, like we're doing now. There was very little exchange of views or opinions. So they did not tell us what they were going to vote at the time. And I think they voted at a future meeting. We did not receive any feedback.
So I received clarification from Ken Moody, who's clearly unable to attend. So just to reiterate, and this is his wording, that the Finance Committee voted to approve the $70,000 for the pickleball, which is $70,000 of Part B. And then, in his word, the question will be why we didn't approve the $200,000 for the design and engineering study at Flax Pond. As I told the board on 2/26, we feel that this final phase at Flax Pond is probably worthwhile. However, given several factors related to Flax Pond, we did not feel comfortable rubber stamping a substantial expenditure for a project where pickleball took away existing playing fields. Pickleball exceeded original projections by at least $68,000, $100,000. It was unclear what the $200,000 study request would accomplish at this time, given that the pickleball construction is behind schedule.
It would complete the project. I'm not really sure what their question was, and actually, I answered that for them at the time. In the phasing in that we were doing all along for Flax Pond, we've seen this been going on for years, we actually had it reversed, that the final that we were going to bring up was the pickleball court, and we were going to be doing the $200,000 for the remaining, remaining fields first. But due to the urgency that we were getting from the community to complete pickleball, we reversed it. But the plan has always been there. If you go back to the original plan, Mike, you know the original plan. It goes back to when you were chair of recreation. That hasn't changed. And the impact now by flipping it was that pickleball took over temporarily the areas that the older kids, the tweens, would be using on the fields. And now by allowing this... And now by allowing this final phase, we'll be able to finish all of that. So originally, as I say, we were going to take care of the fields for the kids first and then finish the pickleball. We just reversed it. The plans are there. Nothing's changed.
Well, interesting you say that, because this says that the 200,000 is for the final design and engineering. It doesn't say anything about the construction.
Engineering.
This says, "Project would provide 200,000 in CPA funds for final design and engineering."
Yeah, my bad. Sorry. It is for the, but we're nearing the end. Last year, there was some design and engineering for, was that Sandy? Sandy Pond. So, okay. Two completely different projects. That's where your splash park's going to be.
So.
I believe it when I see it.
So what is the proper description of this?
It is the design and engineering. For, just as I've described it to you for Part A, it's for the design and engineering of the final.
Only? It's not for any construction?
I defer to Jeff on that.
Correct. It is just design and engineering.
Just design and engineering.
And you think that will get us to the end?
Of design and engineering, absolutely.
Until the next project.
Do we know how much we've invested in design and engineering thus far?
I don't have that on the top of my head for that particular project, or that area.
But we'll be happy to bring it to town meeting. Good.
So last year, town meeting approved 275,000 for Sandy Pond. This is 200,000 for Flax Pond. It was a master plan. I don't know if you consider that design and engineering, but that was about 100,000. And that was some years ago. That's kind of the ballpark you're in.
Okay. Any other questions?
Make a motion, we recommend Article 36.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the.
Can I ask a question for clarification? It's a public hearing, right?
No, not really, but.
Oh, I thought this was a public hearing.
No.
That's why I came up and asked.
It was a discussion of the CPA articles. It is not. I'll allow the question if.
Well, I just wanted to be clear that what you just approved, so that this will be in the warrant, this wordage, to see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the following sums of money from the Community Preservation Act Fund for recreational purposes. And depending on what's voted at the town, either 200,000 from the undesignated reserve and 100,000 from the undesignated reserve. Did I understand that you just voted and accepted the wordage that's printed here? Thank you.
That's correct.
Were we not supposed to?
All right, Article 37.
What, is it the undesignated? That's the question?
Well, that brings up a bigger question. Is that supposed to come from undesignated or is it supposed to, out of balance?
Yes. It is supposed to come from undesignated, which is funds that we have on hand now. It's not supposed to come from anticipated receipts, which would be funds that come on hand after July 1st. So that's the nuance, and it's funds that can be immediately used right after town meeting.
All right. Okay. So the next item is Article 37.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tom Roach, and I served as Planning Board Representative to the CPC Committee. Article 37 is a long-awaited CPA request to start the Riverwalk Park and Boardwalk Loop in the drive-in site. Actually, it's been 34 years since the town acquired that property. 34 years.
You've been dragging your feet since you were a young man.
Well, we're here today, Mr. Chairman. This article would provide 2.2 million in CPA funds for design permitting and partial construction of the Riverwalk Park, Boardwalk Loop and former drive-in property. The Riverwalk Park and Boardwalk design concept presents an opportunity for the town to create a destination location that will energize an area centrally located along Route 28 corridor and provide direct and indirect benefits to residents and visitors alike. This article is requesting funding to design permit in the entire project, as well as provide approximately 25% of the estimated construction cost. The size of the CPA funds is designed to demonstrate the town's commitment to the project, which will help leverage other grant funding opportunities.
We have the motion.
Make a motion to recommend Article 37.
Second. Okay. Discussion, questions?
The only discussion is, I think, for the public to know that I think this is one of the first times there's been kind of a split commitment. Is that the way I read, read it to be?
That is correct. We will be digging into the anticipated receipts for the next fiscal year to do some of the funding of this project.
Okay, so, so basically, it's a total of 2.2.
Yep.
I'm chairman of the CPA. So, sorry I was late. But anyways, we spent a lot of time on this. So the total request was 3.7, correct?
3.714, 200.
So we spent a lot of time, and luckily, we were able to negotiate with the drive-in site committee, because they would like us to commit the entire 3.7, which would basically take all of our funding for the next year and take care of that. So we negotiated this down to that amount for that reason, so that we'd have some money left. But we do anticipate next year and the following year, because it's probably going to be three years before we have to spend it, that we would have another 1.5 committed to this project. But we can't do that by vote, but we anticipate that's going to be required, which would bring them to the 3.7. So we spent a lot of time negotiating this with the drive-in committee, which was great about this, because what they need, they need a commitment from us so they can apply for matching grants. So this was our negotiated amount, but hopefully, we get more grants from other people as we go along, and we won't have to commit the entire 3.7. But we anticipate working in the future with them, and if that's what they need, then I guess we are somewhat committed ourselves to spending that money for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right. I think it's terrific to see movement on this, finally, after so many years. And congratulate the committee for the work that they've done, as well as the CPA funding to be awarded for this. I think it's wonderful to see some activity there with some of the events that are being worked out. And so it, it holds great hope for the future, so.
If I can, I'd like to make one more comment.
Sure.
You know, in the past, over the past few years, sometimes we've been criticized for holding so much, so much money in our account. But we anticipated this, and a couple more projects coming up. So we're trying to be able to do this without adding any burden to the taxpayers. So we've thought about this for years. We knew this was coming. I think it's got the most bang for the buck for the taxpayer. So that's, we negotiated this amount, and we have some other projects coming up along with this. And we anticipate this, and we try to look out for our funds as close as possible so we can fund them.
Okay, well, well, I think certainly, you know, this, along with other investments that are being made along Route 28, I think really demonstrates the town's support for development and, and for support for the businesses, as well as for recreational endeavors in town. I mean, this, this project has many different aspects, so.
Well, if anybody went to the Irish Festival, the place was packed, and that's just in an open field. So anticipate what's going to happen three years from now.
That's right.
It's going to be wonderful.
Okay. Let's see. Did we have a motion? We did. All right, thank you. And any further questions? All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Article 38.
Article 38 is a housekeeping article to clear up language from last year's Warren article dealing with the town's purchase of Yankee Village Motel. The good news is that the town has applied for and been granted a $400,000 grant from the state to offset almost 50% of the cost of the purchase. In order for the grant to be finalized, the wording in last year's Warren article must be tweaked slightly to comply with Mass. General Law, Chapter 45, Section 3, noting that the land is being taken for recreational purposes. With this, with this, the grant is assured. So I think you all know that the property was actually bought by the town or taken by the town, that it be used for recreational, so.
And we have an agreement with them at this point?
With who?
With the owners.
Yes. Yes. We have a P and S.
Make a motion to approve Article 38.
Second. Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
We have the best committee in town, by the way. Very proud to be associated with these people, so. All right.
All right, we're going to move forward at this time with the DY Regional School District Budget Review, which is a, was pointed out to me as a continuation of discussion that occurred earlier this year. I'm not sure that I was here for the meeting at that time. I think I was away.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So.
Oh, here.
Okay, sure, of course.
It's all set.
The list has changed since.
Since.
I know.
Do you have the slide presentation you want thumb drive?
Yeah, if you got your thumb drive, yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
I have to turn around.
Yes.
Oh, replace? Damn, I have the answer. I don't know for sure. I mean, originally, no, I know, I don't think this is as complete as what's in the package. I think it's just this part.
Hello.
Right.
It says no signal.
Okay. We ready?
Ready.
Okay. Okay, all right. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome back, I guess. I wasn't here the, the last time you were here, so.
Okay.
If you would recognize everyone and introduce everyone, and then we can move forward.
Okay, so Carol Woodbury, Superintendent.
Phil Morris, Member of the School Committee.
Ken Janks, Assistant Superintendent.
Brian Sullivan, School Committee.
Great.
So thank you for the opportunity this evening to present our FY '20 budget to the board. Most of the talking's going to be done by Assistant Superintendent Ken Janks, so I'll turn it right over to him to get started.
Good evening, and thank you. Many of these slides have been shown at previous school committee meetings, and some of you are connoisseurs of those meetings, and have probably seen these a few times.
I don't know if connoisseur is a good word.
Yes. I think sometimes, and we need to talk very practically about dollars and cents, but sometimes we can also get a little lost in, so why are we doing this and why are we creating the budgets? And what are we trying to achieve in the school system? And we have three general goals. Those have been our goals for multiple years. We always need work on those, but the first piece is always about, the goal of any budget should be to provide the funds so we can allocate resources to improve student performance. Now, in theory, that should be easy, and we all know in practicality, it's always a challenge. It's harder. Maintain and enhance current programs, with the caveat, if a current program's not getting the results you want, really looking at that and saying, how do you reallocate the resources to get that? And the three Rs for us, which has been retain, recruit, and return. Retain our current students, recruit from other places, and get some of the students to return. And return's, quite frankly, the hardest. And some pictures down there have updated. That one on the right's opposed. Everybody's always not that happy at Career Day, but that's when community members come in and meet with our students. That's important. That's center shot. Law Day, that's one of the things we pride ourselves on. Students are often using their writing for purposes. And on the left, you perhaps recognize the Intergenerational UN Program. Budget timeline for our school committee, we reminded folks that, you can see that blue highlight there, on the 4th, the committee adopted a budget. But by the 18th, in theory, you have to finalize that and get ready for town meetings, because 45-plus days later, give or take, there's some town meetings. And you can see the Yarmouth Town Meeting and the Dennis right down below at the bottom It all begins with enrollment. How many students? And as everyone in this room knows, this is the demographic trend that's really the cause of so many of our issues and what makes it untenable for some of our, some of our partners. That's the assessment enrollment. And that's often confusing, because people will go to the Department of Ed's site and go, wait a minute, that's different. Those numbers aren't the same that I see that the Department of Ed's posting. And that's because the current regional agreement existed before school choice, before charter, and actually before 3K programs were in our district. So there's an approximately 500-student difference between our assessment enrollment, as you see there, and the foundation enrollment. And I did clean up that slide, because the, the column on the left was a little confusing about the year, so I apologize for that. But you can see 3,388 students on the right there. And then you look in the other enrollment, 2,851. The most challenging demographic trend, though, and it's going to be a trend that continues, and much of our budget process this year and perhaps conversation this evening, really is about how do we find ways to make this manageable for our communities and viable? Because when we're always struggling, we can't plan properly for educational programs, the towns have difficulty planning for their programs, and it's all about those two the towns have difficulty planning for their programs, and it's all about those two differences in the enrollment and the assessments. But that trend, fewer and fewer students in Dennis, more and more students in Yarmouth, has created the imbalance that people are working hard to address. And again, there's that foundation enrollment, and you notice that includes all the students for which a town is financially responsible for. Choice and charter, we know that is part of our challenge in the district. People choose other places and other schools for a great many reasons. But one of the more common reasons we hear over the years is when there's a struggle over the budget every year, and people are worried, well, the schools have the programs that I want three and four and five years from now. Sometimes they tend to leave the district as a way to say, I just want to be sure. We know there's other issues we have to address, and we work on our curriculum, and we work on our management pieces in the classroom, but overall, multiple reasons, but this is a fact of life for us. And that's the quarter two, and you can see Dennis, 174, the Yarmouth, 210. You can see the numbers down below. You can see a cash value associated with that. And I put the next slide there to put the net effect, because you can see, on the one hand, how much, in a sense, leaves the district. But we do get the money for choice in, and this is from their most recent cherry sheet and the charter reimbursement, but the net drain on the district's, you know, $3,400,000. And we know anything that we do with our programs and our budgeting, part of it's how do we limit that trend and reverse it? And that goes into our planning. That also has variety, those of you who have followed that, and we know there's that discussion of, okay, have people paid for other people's students and such? The issue becomes, in a way, stepping back, over the long haul, does it balance out? And what's the best way to address that? Is the best way to probably retain as many kids as we can? Yes. And yet, we want to make sure everybody's taken care of in that process. I believe you have copies of the seven or eight pages of the D E S E function codes and the budgets. This is an abbreviated version for folks watching. But in general, this year, the 2.53% increase, as you know, is one of the smaller increases we've had in recent years. We went into the budget situation knowing that we needed to get to a place, again, the word that was most often you'll hear from me this year, manageable, viable for our communities. It doesn't have a connotation of someone saying somebody's unfair or fair, or right or wrong, just trying to keep it balanced. What's workable? You can see that administration, that's everything. In the state category, sometimes they lump some things that you might not lump together if you're looking at it. But that's fundamental, as you might expect. Everybody who's in administration, but also the people that support the administration and the central office and those accounts. Instruction, the 2000 series. Everyone who's involved in the classroom or many of the supports of a classroom, providing education, certified staff, the teaching assistants, and others. And you can see the breakdowns. There's about eight or 10 categories. Usually, that deals in your budget up there. The 3000, pupil services. Now, often, special ed, that fits there, and that's what people think. The state also puts the buses there, that bus transportation as a pupil service. And that's a hefty amount of that in there. For us, one of the significant increases this year is that 4000 series, maintenance. And we face that dilemma that both of our communities face. When it comes time to develop budgets, at the end of the day, maintenance of existing facilities sometimes gets a little bit of a short shrift. At least in the school side, over the last four or five years, I think we felt sometimes if we had to choose between some academic programs and doing a little bit in maintenance or trying to beef that up a little, if you will, the decision was made for the academics. And we don't want to be in that situation. I think sometimes people say, well, you know, for instance, why do you need new schools? You didn't maintain them properly. I would argue that's not true at all. I live in Dennis, and occasionally, we have to build new facilities, and it's not because people didn't maintain the other facilities, but they're getting old, and we've moved beyond their usefulness. I know the highway barn. I don't think anybody ever misused the highway barn in Yarmouth, but at some point in time, you get there, if it's an ancient structure, if you will. So we keep them clean, and we do maintenance. But this would allow us, especially in things like renewing trash contracts, we know those prices going up dramatically, heating, venting, doing some more work on some of the plumbing and mechanical. Will it prevent us from needing to do significant work later on down the road? No. But sometimes, will that help delay that process? Yes. Benefits and insurance, very costly. You notice there's approximately a $100,000 jump this year. We benefited immensely, like everyone, from the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, not having any raise to speak of this year for programming. Most of the $100,000 you see in that category, this is where we put all of our insurance, health plans, retirement kinds of benefits, as well as property insurance. M I I A recommended we increase some of our property insurance. So most of that increase there, that $100,000, is either property insurance, facilities, it may sound crazy, but we have a few drones, so you need a drone insurance, all these various things, as well as some minor increases for benefits, because as people change plans, sometimes you've got to accommodate that, and you have to leave a little bit of a cushion there. Community services, that's the nice way to say, that's the buses we provide for the private schools or the Catholic schools that are in the district. That is not accounted by the state as the regular bus transportation is. Equipment and capital, that's a token amount that the district maintains every year. That's different from our capital requests. Debt service, you can see we're in that position as that debt goes down. That also helped the budget get 2.53% this year without looking at significant reductions. And then finally, those payments to all of the schools, that's everything from mostly specialized programming, the collaboratives, specialized programs off Cape. And you can see, that's a sizable amount of money. It's required by student individual educational plans. There's not a great deal of room there, if you will, for discussion or debate, and yet we try to always say, what's educationally sound, as well as really cost-effective? Whenever possible, the district keeps programs in-house. Philosophically, we think our families would much rather have a student with some significant disabilities staying with their peers as long as possible, being in our communities as opposed to going to outside placements. Whenever we can, and we have multiple programs in the district, we do it with our own specially-trained personnel. It is cost-effective, and again, educationally and philosophically, I think that's the right thing to do. Overall, in a very broad brush category, you can see that's our budget. Those are the increases. And again, 2.53%. Now, we clearly know that doesn't mean a 2.5%, 5.3% for the assessments, but that's part of that structural problem that I know people are going to discuss the regional agreement next. We know those trends are problematic. Back when it might have been about 60-40, it was a very different experience for folks. On March fourth, the committee adopted that budget, the 2.53%, the increases, the $62,1,508. To put that in a little of context, over decades of budgets there, you can see, in recent years, I think in the last eight years, it's been 3% or higher and two, under 3% about equal amounts of times. It was important to get to that figure this year, because again, we know the strain on the communities, and we need to be cognizant of that, as well as saying, but this is what we need to run quality programs and maintain programs in our district. I can walk folks through how we get to an assessment calculation. I've done that in the past for folks. There's also a series of slides. Glad to do that. You know, if we were using the current regional agreement assessment this year, 2.53%, this boils down that worksheet I think you received with about 110 lines into a more simple approach. Net school spending, it's everything you spend, but the state has some exemption categories, including debt and transportation and a couple of the minor factors. So you begin with our assessment, well, beginning of that 57-235-816 represents that $62 million budget. After the net school spending items have been removed, you see the share for each town. State and district revenue, that 86-12973, that's proportioned to the communities based on regional agreement language and percentages. That brings you to a foundation assessment you see in line three there. Now, the state required local contribution in the yellow. They give us that number. It's that simple. Every year, the state tells us what that number looks like. In recent years, it's dropped a little under a percentage point a year for Dennis and often gone up a little more than a percentage point a year for Yarmouth. And again, that begins with, that's the state. And the state uses foundation when they're using their calculations to get us to that number. The remaining amount over that, the amount above the required local contribution, you see in five there, it's slightly, it's impacted by the enrollments, and some slight there, slight adjustments there. And finally, in line six, you see there's the statutory assessment, 48-622-843. You go to the next page, and so that statutory assessment's still there. You see how it's divided, the 29-5-6 and the 74-3, that's from the original agreement. Then you put capital costs in, transportation significant, you see that, that's the transportation after the state reimbursement, and you get those operating assessments. And you'll see in this case, Dennis, 15-983-811, and Yarmouth, 35-444-160. This is part of the huge structural problem still. One would think a 2.53% budget sounds manageable for folks. And then when we get to what was last year's assessment, we compare it to the 2.5% projected increase that both towns traditionally have provided, and you see, on the left, Dennis is in a position where, in theory, if we're using the regional agreement, that's well within their means. There's, it's a lower figure. And Yarmouth has this million-dollar gap. We know over the, this is not viable. We know for multiple years, this demographic trend has put the real strain in the relationship. And so I think that's, I know there was a significant regional agreement discussions for a long time, and that led, I know the committee was working on this as well, and that led to looking at some different kinds of options to present, that were presented to the school committee at the last meeting. And that would be the final result of the assessments using the current regional agreement formula, or the one that was existing. There had been a great deal of discussion about, well, using foundation enrollment to get to a better place. You'll notice the percentages, the 31.3459 and 68.6541. And again, while it helped, you can't see down below, but it helped ameliorate the situation, it still was a little challenge, it's clearly a challenge for Yarmouth. And those were the final numbers. And then the five-year rolling average. And you can see the difference down below. And I know that was very appealing to folks, of course, but the viability piece and the decision piece, you can see that brings folks to a place where, okay, there's the ability for both towns, things are viable, people can work at it, we can do planning. The committee had a number of options to choose from, and I won't speak for the committee, but they also wanted a different option, which became the one that was approved at that school committee meeting, the last school committee meeting, to start with a 32-68 split. Now, we call that a hard split, because if we put enrollments in the worksheet, then you still have to override it to go, it's a 32-68 split. And if you take it and you look at the $62,1,508 budget, you look at those prior year's assessments, the same every, you know, every prior year, you're looking at that same assessment on all these slides you go through, you can see while on the one hand, Dennis is still under a 2.5% increase, that's brought the significant gap down. Now, 601,000 is still a substantial gap, freely admit that, but it's a much better starting place for perhaps looking at other options now. And that's where the school committee ended on the last meeting, voting to go that route. And obviously, I think later, the superintendent and some others will talk about the regional agreement, and I know on the warrant for town meetings, that would require a certain vote before we get to the budget vote. For what it's worth, I think it helps make it much more manageable for everyone over the long haul. It doesn't necessarily fix everything immediately, and I recognize that. And then there would be your assessments. If things were to progress with the proposed regional agreement, I tried to summarize it with a slide that wasn't so busy that you lost, you couldn't track it. But if you take on the left, the budget trends, those are the budget splits, if you will, proposed in the proposed regional agreement. And I just, I grabbed only the operating assessment compared, and I did the variance with 2.5 each year. So in that top slide, you look at the FY twenty budget, I mean, the top side, there's that 215-242, that Dennis in theory is under the 2.5. The Yarmouth would be 601-409 above. But then you see the next column compares if we were using the current regional agreement with that split, that's what it would look like. And that 469-504 is just the difference between using the proposed agreement and using the current agreement. And then if you look at FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, the proposals were to stay with a 33-67 for the two years. And again, you can see what that starts to do to the variance with 2.5. There's some stabilization. And you see in the second year, 398-588 for Yarmouth above 2.5. And I know those aren't perfect because they're above 2.5, but we're getting to a better place compared to if you stayed with the old agreement, if you will, and, you know, a million plus. And then you see FY twenty-two. And then you go down to FY twenty-three, in theory, the 34-66% split, and you can see now the shift. Dennis is looking at the same kind of challenge that Yarmouth's been facing for quite some time. But again, you can see the difference between $97,025 and $1,794. Now, we all know, and any time you go more than two or three years out, I worry about the numbers. Couple things, these are all predicated, what are the assumptions? Tried to do some baseline assumptions. A 3% school budget increase per year, because we could have picked different numbers. What I would fear is if we started to pick an artificially low number, that people are going to go, you're not going to meet that most every year, how, that's not reasonable. Assumed, revenues went up 1% a year, and I know that's perhaps an underestimate. I know the governor and the legislature will work through what they want to, but we all know what happens. They promise all kinds of things, and then if the economy is a little sluggish, we don't see that big increase. I'd rather have us underestimate a little bit of the revenue and be conservative and cautious than overestimate and have someone three years from now look at budget projection figures and go, really? You told us it was going to cost this. And so with all the caveats, and yet it shows, you know, the magnitude. The first cycle, we moved forward, the FY twenty-one, kind of assuming, okay, does Dennis get that almost 1% decrease in minimum required contribution, and Yarmouth that 1% increase? We'll hold with that. But then we held those stable for the next several years, because it's a little too far out, and according to the state... And according to the state, their work is supposed to adjust and compensate to address some of those inequalities, especially in districts like ours. And so there was a little bit of, those are some of the assumptions that went into the figures. I think they're as accurate as you can get for going two or three years out, but they more ought to illustrate substantially, using those percentages, it ameliorates some of the issues of that split. And on the right hand, if we considered every year, it looked like about, if we're using regional assessment, the regional agreement, it was about a 1.5 to 2% per year work against Yarmouth, if you will, and it was decreasing. That, when I did my calculations, I did it about 1% a year to try to say, what if we slowed that down? So if anything, sometimes the difference between the proposed regional agreement and the old, the current regional agreement would actually result in a better savings, if you will, for one of the, for Yarmouth. The reality is, we know the demographic trend is one of the biggest impacts on our budget. You know, normally saying you're going to go up 2 or 2.5%, people are like, oh, that's good. So, and where does that fit in educationally? I guess at the end of the day, we know when our community is under great stress and the community, the committee is under great stress, education seems to get pushed a little to the side. When we're struggling and fighting over what's reasonable and what's affordable, I think education can be collateral damage. And to maintain our best programs and our best opportunities for students, I think, I'm hopeful that everybody can work together to say, what's manageable for both of our communities? What's viable? So that we maintain the educational programs because the struggle isn't helpful for any of us. And to sum up, always aware that we're working on things, but I worry sometimes we spend all the time making it sound like, oh, our students don't have any great opportunities at DY. They have some phenomenal opportunities in the system. And the longer you're in the system, the better off you tend to do. You know, we know some of our struggle with curriculum and some of those things at the lower grades and our test scores. By the time you get to the high school, things are in a good place. And then would we like them there sooner? Of course. But at the end of the day, we send students to some of the Ivies, you know, we've had three Harvards and three MITs in five or six years. Is that the only measuring stick? No. If you love music, we get you there. If you love the art, if you want the engineering and that. Significant percentage of our students go on to two and four-year colleges. If there's one wish I had, I wish people would be a little more open-minded about 4Cs. It's a little untapped gem down the street, and I think some people would be, it would be a great starting place and an affordable starting place for our community. But some, those are some of the, you know, the logos of schools. Any given year, 79, 80% of our students are going off a little bit morbid and accepted. We often struggle with they can't afford to go, but that's a different discussion. And I'm amazed at how many of those are copyrighted, but I won't get into that. Other benefits to the program, you know, academically, it's there, it's on the table. We have some great athletic programs. This year, field hockey was the state champs. Other years, there's been football. It's a nice mix between female sports and male sports. The band, we all know. This district and these two communities, despite all our struggles over the years, have supported art and music when others cut them to the bone. And that's made a difference for our students with their opportunities in their lives. You see the Boston Globe, the results, the Poetry Out Loud and the Law Day, our students do it. We still have students with partner schools in Mexico and other, and in parts of Europe who are doing Skyping and go to meetings and comparing their science results. So some great programs that, the technology and the initiatives. I'm not going to read every bullet point in the slide. I just always want to make that case. Yes, we're working on things. Yes, we want performance to increase, but we're having some great success. And yet balancing that is knowing that we need to find something that's viable and manageable for both of our communities so we can keep that process going. And I feel like I've talked for a long time now, so I'll stop. There certainly may be some questions.
Open up to the board, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ken, for that presentation. I appreciate the challenge in estimating revenues, and I, and I, and I support your conservative approach. One of the things that I missed, though, I missed on the expenditure side, the OPEB number. What is that number that you're using for FY '20?
We haven't put an OPEB number in. As I think many people are aware, the towns and especially the district are in a great position because of the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. And there was about a $740,000 return. It's, since our committee has not had the opportunity, the school committee, to discuss that or look at that, I'm a little reluctant to say what I would recommend. We all know that came out of the health group being recommended for OPEB. And yet I want to make sure the committee, the superintendent, everybody has an opportunity to discuss that.
So you'll be making a decision on the OPEB based on the overall discussion about what to do with that refund, that Medicare refund? Is that a...
The committee will be making that decision, yes.
What we've done sometimes in the past is at the end of the fiscal year, when we have returns in retiree health insurance, we've been putting that in. So we do belong to the Peacock, the Plymouth County, or is it Plymouth County? OPEB Trust, and we've had some good results from that, so it's doing quite well.
That's helpful, thank you. I think I saw in an earlier budget presentation, an estimate on the shortfall in terms of mandated costs and mandated funding. I think there was a number around 3.5 million, 3.3 million in state underfunding. Is that, can you help me with that, Ken? A little bit, there's a number there that I know in which the state should, had they fully reimbursed the school district for a number of items promised to the, to DY, we would have, we would have seen an extra 3.5 million. I don't, I don't want to...
Yeah, without material in front of me, I'm always reluctant to give a specific figure. But we all know, as a regional, a regional, the state encouraged that for years and offered, oh, they were going to do 100% reimbursement for your regional transportation. Well, we spend over $3 million on buses, and in a good year, we'll get about 1.3 or 1.4 million in reimbursement. So right off the top, you have that. And then other programs, there's some similar shortfalls. At the very least, if the state would address all of those at the 100% rate, we probably wouldn't even be having most of the stress that we have between our two communities at budget time. If I'd be, maybe forgiven a little bit of a history piece, I think I remember back when Dr. McCaffrey was in the district and the committee in the late 80s, early 90s was talking about it was horrible because the state was only going to give about 24, 25% of a school's budget to the schools. And, you know, now if you see 17%, you're ecstatic. That gap in the last 20 years has really been about the state pulling away, but that's a different subject. But yes, those shortfalls negatively impact us.
No, I bring that up because I know lately the state representatives have been showing a lot of interest in what's happening here at DY. And I just want to make sure I was clear on the amount of state funding shortfall that we could certainly use more help with.
I'll get a pretty precise number for you, but...
That would be, but it's in the 3.5 million dollar range, somewhere around there. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mike?
I don't have any questions at this point. Thank you for your presentation.
Jason?
Thank you. I've had the ability to see this several times, and I appreciate your work as you've gone through it. I know it's been a difficult year with a lot of balls in the air, so I appreciate all the extra work that it took to get to the point where we're at. You provided some information that we didn't really talk much about. The difference between the assessment and the foundation is about 537 students. I was kind of surprised to see the percentages that were given for the choice and charter, and I think it's, you know, it's valuable information based on kind of where we're at and what we're talking about for people to understand that 45% of the choice-out students are from Dennis. And while the number is less than Yarmouth, you know, it's still, right now, it's split on per pupil, I mean, on the assessment. So Yarmouth pays 70% of that. So that's kind of one of the pieces, I think, that we've been trying to get to, and I know it's been supported in Dennis, so, but it's interesting to see that. And there was also something I didn't see here today, and I was curious what the dollar amount was, but there was a slide that you had given us relating to out-of-district placements. And I'm not sure if that's split. It'd be interesting, just, you don't have to do it now in an email to see how that, how that too breaks down. I think it's, you know, obviously, these things fluctuate all the time based on today and tomorrow. It's really amazing how the school budget, you know, I don't think people really understand that a budget is a tool. And unfortunately, sometimes, you know, we have, Massachusetts, and it's not just the DY district, has a very, what people from the South or other states consider a very lucrative, I guess, out-of-district placement type of educational process where, you know, people in some states are very restricted on how they're allowed to educate their special education students. And here, they come here because they know how great it is, and we should be glad about that. Unfortunately, some of those times, it's a $200,000 budget for somebody who's lived in the town for a day. They come in, they register if they live here. Those are the types of things I think people don't really understand that it makes significant shifts in, in a budget. You know, you have two or three move in, and we've had years where that's happened. And I don't want to pick on special education, but it's something, it's just another piece that happens in there. So it'd be interesting to see how that plays in. And what's the, what's the pre-K number? What do we have in pre-K now? And how is that? It's over 80? Is that include, that's included in our foundation number, correct?
Yes. There's a, I can again email the exact number. It's over 80. You have to remember, though, they count it as a half FTE. I don't know if it's related to height or it's, no, no, it's because they do half-day. As a high school guy, you know, anyway, but no, because of that, the number 54 comes in my head, I think, when you do the FTEs and you do all the comparisons. But the head count's actually a little higher.
Okay. I guess one of the other things that we haven't talked about in a while, and I'm not sure you're prepared to talk about tonight, I was just thinking about it, was state revenue. So is there any way that we know, is it a bucket that you get from, from the state that's for the district, it's not identified by town? And then you just get that number and it just automatically gets split? But there's no way to know what Yarmouth's revenue would be? Is there a way for you to tell us what, what the revenue would be from the state for...
I think you've answered your own question. I don't think so.
So it's a bucket.
We just divide it.
And you divide it based on student population?
Right.
Okay.
Some of it, we may be able to tinker with with the foundation, but right, in general, it's, here's what your money is for X, and then divvy it up however your regional agreement is based or...
It would be rather difficult to figure out because you'd have to really actually get down to the student level. Because in that large formula that the state uses, you know, you get certain increments for low income, and this kind of goes back to Selectman Forrest's question about some of the, some of the challenges of that, of that formula, you know. We currently have about 41%, considered 41% economically disadvantaged, but yet our free and reduced lunch numbers are in the 60% range for the district. So we're losing about 19% of the revenue that we should be getting because no longer, and this is based, I found out recently, actually just came through because of the U.S. Department of Agriculture. When our state Department of Education brought it up to the federal Department of Education, they didn't even know about it. And if you think we're losing, the cities are really losing. And so only if people are registered for other forms of income, of other forms of service, such as food, welfare, or some other kind of service, do we get to count them. Whereas when we collect the paper ourselves, and so one of the things that we've asked the legislature to consider is allowing districts like ours to collect the paper. Of course, there are cities that don't want to go back to collecting paper because they had about 70% of their students were receiving free and reduced lunch, so now they can provide universal free breakfast and lunch. And so for them to have to go back to collect the paper is an impact, right? But for those of us who don't have that, we should be allowed to collect the paper to prove that we do have students that do require those services. And that would help, it would bring in more state revenue for us as well. So just one example.
Well, I'm happy to see that the maintenance of the buildings have increased even though you've stayed with a 2.5, 3% increase overall. My, my question is, when I go through the line items, the one thing that jumps out at me is the paraprofessional goes up by 23%. What's the, what's the significance behind that percentage increase?
It's a little bit of a hedging the bets because we seem to, this is the time of year where as people are, there's an annual review of student progress, and you can see a jump up in students who aren't making progress, and then people are going to want or write into an educational plan, an assistant for next year. And I'm being perhaps overly, again, cautious at this point, but I wanted to make sure we weren't finding ourselves in the position that, oh, gosh, we're going to need 15 more assistants according to individualized education plans next year, and we haven't budgeted for that. And in some years, what we've used is the teacher retirements and savings through a little bit of attrition to cover that. And this year, as I've said at multiple presentations, we're trying to not replace people who are retiring or the attrition because we, that's a huge cost savings, as people know, if that's someone's making $80,000 a year and retires. Traditionally in the past, we tended as a district to often replace them. And so you replace them with a new teacher, say, starting at 45 or 50, you get some savings. But one of the ways we brought us to that 2.5, 3% increase this year was a little bit of a, let's not replace a person, and if the position needs to be replaced, can we then reassign one of the 340-some-odd certified people who are also pretty skilled in the district there? And so I'm being overly cautious, you know, might be an area for some reduction in the next month or so, but the timing is such, I just, I feel this is the closest we've come in recent years to coming up with a budget with no reserve there. Some of the grants, and I've said several times at the committee meetings in the past, sometimes there was some cushion room, but if grants get cut this year, I think we have to remove some positions because that's where the money was, and there wasn't backup funding. So in a sense, we weren't doing a great many cuts this year to get to a point because we're right at the edge, and that is the jump up there. And I wish there was a way to do it without, you know, putting that money aside a little bit, if you will.
There are two other things to consider. We never know who's coming in kindergarten and also sometimes preschool. The other piece of what Mr. Jenks is talking about, just in terms of the grants, many of our reading teachers are paid through grants, federal grants. They keep talking about cuts at the federal level. If that happens, some of the reading services that we have won't be able to be available. So if we have a little bit of a cushion, we might be able to help that a little bit if that does happen. And also Title I, which is a pretty significant amount of money. I think we get about, close to $900,000 in Title I, and it pays for several positions to help students who are struggling in, in the early grades. We only use it in our K-23 schools because we don't have enough to spread it out any further, but it really is something that we need, so. So we don't want to lose those services. We don't certainly have enough money in the budget to, if that wall got cut, to take care of it. But it's a good way of us making sure that we have a little bit of a cushion there.
And if you notice, the counterbalance in the teacher line, that line didn't see the kind of increase you would traditionally see because we were pulling the multiple retirements out of there at about seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars a retirement.
So you're going to have less seventeen students, basically, overall? Or that's what it was from last year?
Right.
Do we know projected for next year's budget, what you anticipate overall for a number instead of the twenty?
The preliminary indications are we should assume it's about the same. The kind, principals are getting very concerned about the size of the kindergartens. And again, I mean, I guess it's a great problem to have, but at some point, any flexibility you have, because you need not to have those students in, you know, classes of twenty-seven or twenty-eight. I think over the long term, when you saw the progression, we can anticipate a continued decrease, but right now, this mult, three, the three elementary principals and the early education coordinator are also all concerned about the numbers of people starting to come in. It seems ahead of schedule to enroll.
So, so in terms of attrition, that, what's your, what's your FTE overall from FY19 to FY20? Do you know?
When we're done, I would assume it's going to be about four to six fewer certified positions. And again, once we're in a position to feel comfortable at the end of May, early June, and of course, that's after town meeting, there's the challenge for our cycle with the individualized education plans adjustments, we may be able to then, we'll be in a great place. You know, we're not going to be spendthrifts about this because we know how that plays out, and we'll have a better handle. But that way, we'll be sure that if there were services required, we're not trying to figure out what to cut to push that over.
No, I thought it was more, more than that. So I'm glad that that savings would happen with that, just that many. So last year, Mrs. Lopes had a plan for providing the services differently, and there was a, a cut to the FTEs. Is that staying in place now, going into FY20? Or is that why, one of the reasons why some of the paraprofessionals are being added?
We still have it in play. It's very challenging, and it's, to be candid, it's causing some stress for a number of people. And yet, at the end of the day, I think it takes a while. Part of the decision, you know, part of the challenge for that, it tends to be school-based. So suddenly, if I'm in a, pick a, you know, small, ME small, but you could say station out, if suddenly the need there is for three or four more kinds of interactions with students to be done, suddenly you have to reschedule that teacher and reschedule everybody else and start fresh. We're still committed to that. The concern I have is the educational need, much as you made that reference to, if somebody in the, comes into the community and the educational plan says you need a twenty-four-seven day program, you try to find the best reasonably priced program. As we roll over the individualized education plans for every year, I think there's a tendency for people to say, well, let's make sure you have a teaching assistant to help you at that next level or that next grade because I want to make sure you're getting everything you need. And while that's laudable, sometimes I'm not sure, it's always been based on absolute need.
I think you guys have done a remarkable job with controlling the costs and providing the programs in district to the extent that you're able to. So I commend you for that. I think it's been great. What is your certified E and D amount at this time?
Currently about five-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. We have a request into the state because last year, they had us much higher than we ended up. And this year, we wrapped the end up, we ended the year with a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars, you know, unassigned. And so we're not sure why that wasn't, it doesn't seem that was credited because we were expecting to be in the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar range.
Good. Well, overall, I'm, I'm very happy. I appreciate it. Looking forward to our discussion about the regional agreement. I'm very hopeful for that because I think the schools, much like the town, would like to make progress. And I think, you know, we talk about the same things, and we're really, really tight every year, and I'm hoping with a potential new agreement, we can actually, maybe in the future, be talking about ways that we can make progress together, both as a town and as a regional district, so.
Great. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi.
Thank you for the presentation. I, I think it was fairly easy to follow, but just for my own personal clarification, I want to ask two questions. Slide number fourteen, where the variance to Yarmouth is one million, seventy thousand, and slide number twenty, where the variance to Yarmouth is six-hundred-and-one thousand. The six-hundred-and-one is based on the assumption of the new regional.
Yes, yes, actually, okay, yes.
And that's the sixty-eight-thirty-two split that you referenced at the top of that slide, right?
Yes.
And then the one million is assuming things stay the same today?
Right.
Okay. All right, so that one was easy. This one might be easy as well. In, let's say, in two thousand and nine or ten and prior, and again, let me finish, and then if my memory is incorrect, you can correct me. Overages, anything over the prior year's assessment was what Bob Lawton used to like to call subject to appropriation. Is that right? And then on or about, on or about, you know, fiscal year eleven or twelve, the town started voluntary, voluntarily committing to that two-and-a-half percent over the prior year's assessment. Is that also correct?
Most likely. I wouldn't be able to tell you years off the top of my head.
So my question is, let's, let's use slide number fourteen.
Is that this one? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yeah.
So let's use slide number fourteen and look at FY20 assessment of thirty-five million, four-hundred-and-forty-four thousand. That already has the two-and-a-half percent over the prior year's assessment built into it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And the, and the two-point-five-three is in addition to that. So the actual percentage of the prior year's assessment is five, not two-and-a-half, correct?
No.
Right. The only, I guess, to explain the slide, and I just want to make sure I'm not saying something that's not, you know, I don't want to be inaccurate. The two-and-a-half, I know that's the measuring that most people tend to use, which is why I put that, you know, the variance to, to the two-and-a-half percent excluding the debt. Don't mean to ever imply, because we know the total increase sometimes for assessments is four and five percent, if that's what you're driving at, yeah. I'm not trying to hide anything, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that's why prior year plus two-and-a-half has become the conversation point, for better or worse, because that's the question we seem to always be asked first. But yes, it's often different from that, above that, yeah.
I believe, Mr. Tolly, that if the, if the new regional agreement being put forward is approved in both towns, I think that the Yarmouth increase this year would be, I think it was around four-point-three percent.
Four-point-three, which is the?
The two-and-a-half.
Two-point-five plus whatever percentage, that's six-hundred.
One-point-eight, I think it was, wasn't it?
I think so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was interpreting that correctly, because if I wasn't, then I, I was going to go back and ask some more questions about slide number eleven, because I remember in, in fiscal years twenty-ten and eleven, when the town requested the, the zero budget increase, that was, that was a true zero. That wasn't a two-and-a-half percent increase, and we're going to call that zero. It was, those were real zeros. So I'm wondering, in these numbers, this chronology of the, of the fiscal years and the variance, those variances reflect the percentages over and above whatever the prior year's assessment plus two-and-a-half percent was. Is that correct?
No, that's the grand total increase of the entire budget.
Right. I believe it's the increase of the budget. Again, it's not about assessments. That's the piece, I think that's.
Maybe that's where I'm getting.
It's the shift that's messing you up.
Yes.
Because, just because the budget this year went up two-point-five-three percent, our portion is a totally different number than that.
Right, right.
Yes.
The shift, it's the gift that keeps giving.
She's been paying attention.
Okay. All right. I'm not going to be able to reconcile that in my head, but it answers my question. Thank you again.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to follow up on, on something Tracy was talking about or asking about, the half-a-million-dollar increase in the par, I think it's the paraprofessionals. There's likewise a half-a-million dollars reduction in the classroom teacher line item. Is that a philosophical change? Is it just numbers? Is it, you know, I guess I'm trying to understand the explanations you gave already. Excuse me.
If I may, it doesn't represent a philosophical shift. That, if you imagine, say, four retirees at about eighty thousand dollars being removed from the budget, right away, you're seeing that three-hundred-twenty-thousand-dollar decrease. Now, again, not necessarily the most popular discussion we've had sometimes because I think people are worried, oh, my gosh, what about a replacement? And I would argue, again, there's some three-hundred-forty members of the Teachers Association who are certified, and in general, we can often say, can we reallocate some of the resources and, and those things? And so that reduction, coupled with the idea, there's not a cushion for some of the grant positions that we used to have, quite frankly, brings you to that five-hundred-thousand-dollar reduction there. And a little bit of a perhaps over-cautious nature of my side was making sure if we added those assistants, we wanted to make sure they were in the budget. As things develop, we will save some money as other people transition out of the district or for whatever reason leave, and we are replacing their position, and we hire someone who's less costly. There was always a certain amount of savings there. But it's not about a philosophical, oh, we want more assistance and fewer certified. Given our druthers, I think we would always rather have certified people whenever possible. But sometimes, depending on what's in the individualized education plan, it comes back to someone, they want an assistant with a student in the classroom. And at about twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand, a really talented assistant, and if we think about it, we don't, we want the talented assistants to be working with some of our students who need the most help. That increase doesn't represent large numbers of people. And if there's, you know, if I was overly cautious this year, certainly it's something we can look at for the future, but that's the piece. We're still committed to certified staff.
I think it would be helpful to have an example. So when we started this school year, it was about mid-August, when principals started telling us, oh, I'm, this student is coming, this student's coming, we need this, we need that. I think we added in early, end of August, early September, about eight assistants. And they were unanticipated.
Okay.
So we had to tighten every, all other places to do, in order to be able to do that. One of the things that did help us, I think we had some late retirements in the process last year that we had unanticipated, so that helped a bit. So that's just an example. So this year, since we're already anticipating, you know, we've gotten those retirements early, we've been able to say, okay, but we better plan for this because look what happened to us last year.
I guess my, I actually have two other questions. One is with regard, and someone asked me this the other day, and I looked back at, at some of the enrollment numbers details that were on the state website, and specific questions about our enrollment at the high school. And, you know, they pointed out that there's been significant reduction in the overall enrollment, even after we had.
The eighth.
Transferred the eighth grade over. And I think, I looked at the numbers, and it was pretty startling. I think it was in the neighborhood of, I think our high was like fifteen-hundred-and-fifty students, and now we're at about a thousand. And.
It's fifteen oh-one now.
In the high school?
I don't know where we could put them now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what year was that? Are we talking about?
I'm just going by the, the chart that.
Yeah. And that's a little inaccurate. That's why it says hard split, because once we were, if we put in the foundation numbers and then it tries to break it by the real percentages, it was, I can get you the accurate numbers that go there. I had to override that because it's saying, why are you saying it's thirty-two, sixty-eight when ten, sixty-two in the Yarmouth number are not those percentages? So that's a little inaccurate. I'll fix that and give you a revised sheet with the individual schools, but it's still going to be overridden. That was my shorthand to make sure I wasn't going, oh.
But the total number of students in the school is the same.
The correct, the ten, sixty-two for the district in the.
Fifteen hundred?
I'm looking at the chart you gave us.
Yeah.
It says the high school, fifteen hundred, totals thirty-three hundred.
That was the way to get it to go to the sixty-two, thirty-eight. It's artificial. I apologize. I see what you're, now where you're going. Okay. I will give you one that's more accurate. The problem is going to override, and the, the percentages won't match what's listed there.
Yeah, my question is not about that. My question is, is really about, is if we've gone from fifteen-hundred-and-fifty students down to a thousand, what's happened with the space? I mean, you know, that's an awful lot of.
In what year was there that many students?
Oh, I'm going to say it's ten years. I, you know, I don't know if that's, that's.
Seems like it would have to be longer than that because I've been here fourteen.
Okay.
So I can't, it's never been that high in my time here. And I would say that some of it has to do with when they renovated the high school. A lot of things changed, more guidance office space and different things like that. Again, would know better. But the other thing is, we also have some specialized programs up there that take up a fair amount of real estate, if you will, but they serve small amounts of kids. But you can add to that.
Yeah. When we had about twelve hundred students, we're at the maximum where it was kind of designed to hold that many students. So when we had more, it was, it was very problematic. As we evolved, and again, we have some of the specialty programs now, our complex care program, which takes multiple spaces, our alternative ed program takes three classroom quasi-equivalent spaces. That space was reallocated for some of the specialty programs, so in a sense, that's what's happened to some of the space. And renovation did decrease the number of science and math rooms by about two rooms to make them bigger because we had some smaller rooms. But, you know, that piece of, so the space wasn't so much, it's just sitting there, it's been reused for other purposes. But that, we, for a while, we had early childhood, if some folks might remember that, at the high school for a long time, and that took about three classroom equivalent spaces. So we're probably talking about seven to eight classroom spaces taken with the specialty programs. So in theory, if you had somewhere else to move them, you could reclaim that space, but the dilemma, you know, the dilemma is where do we move them? And that decrease in high school enrollment is really, that's that challenge that everybody's faced for about ten years. NOSIT, to be candid, was brilliant when they realized they were going to keep shrinking unless they assertively and aggressively followed school choice. They did that. Barnstable, as we all know, moved their eighth grade to the high school. We did as well, Dennis Yarmouth. We wanted, we had some real academic thoughts in. Dennis Yarmouth, we wanted, we had some real academic thoughts in mind, but it was also a reality of declining enrollment at the high school level across the Cape. Sandwich, we know, has significantly downsized. So everybody, in a sense, with that older population. And that's why, you know, select woman posed question about overall, the decrease in enrollment, that's a trend for Cape schools. You know, we all know the property values and second houses and those things, meaning we'll see fewer students over the long haul. Would be there some consolidation opportunities, perhaps? Yes.
Okay.
One of the advantages of sitting on the board of the Cape Cod Collaborative is a chance to compare with other districts and other administrators in, from the years 2000 to 2010, or a decade, a little bit, few years either side, the middle class population, or the population in general dropped 20% and the population of the under 18s dropped 24%. Most of them middle class. And the consequence was that all school districts had a drop in enrollment that had nothing to do with choice and charter. It had to do with people leaving during the economic, the recession. But what has also happened is that the larger school districts, and we're one of them, had more to offer in the competition with ed reform making school districts compete against each other. So the choice and charter has an opportunity, like Nauset, to add up to one quarter to one third of their enrollment is from outside their district. What has really been hard hit is the small elementary school districts from the small towns. They may feed into Harwich or they may feed into the single district like in Barnstable or Falmouth. But the competition for students is really very profound and you'll see almost old-fashioned advertising about come to our school as if they were private school or charter schools. As a consequence, the fact that we, in the middle of the 2000s, were rebuilding, renovating D Y while the kids were still in the school. And before we started renovation, we were actually bringing more kids into the high school from out of, out of district. We're actually approaching that now, but during the time of renovation, we didn't have the room for more students. And as Ken has alluded to, once the eighth grade comes into D Y at the high school level, they have an opportunity to participate in more exciting and enriching environments. And it also keeps their commitment more to the D Y region than had been before. So the schools are being challenged to come up with innovative ways to keep the kids or bring kids in, sometimes more than just educational values. We do promote ourselves with the D Y advantage. But in comparing at the board level of the collaborative, so too the special needs kids who can benefit from a larger environment than the smaller elementary schools who don't have the resources for some of the one-on-ones or other high intense programs. You'll probably see more collaborative interaction in the, in the future as enrollment, if the enrollment continues to drop. So that's a perspective that I've shared with the administration.
I'm not sure I have any other questions at this point. You know, I think we've got a pretty clear picture. I guess one other thing, it has, when we look at the chart that shows the percentage of, or the foundation enrollment, back on page six, I guess, the, you know, the Dennis enrollment has dropped from 2015 at about 35% of the district. About 35% of the district down to 31. And, you know, I assume the number of, if you relate that to the actual number of kids enrolled, the, the relationship would be the same. So there's been about a 4% drop, a three and a half to 4% drop. What has that done to the, in that period of time, or just in the last three or four years, to the Dennis apportionment? Has Dennis's apportionment in, in real dollars gone down or is it flat compared to three years ago because of the reduction in enrollment?
The reality is, it's gone down. We'd have to run compared to, in real dollar terms, what does that going down mean? And I guess that's the challenge, as everybody sees, again, that's the trend, clearly. That's causing the duress. And if I may be excused to make the observation at this point, the reality is, to have a school system with 1,062 students in would not be particularly viable. You wouldn't be offered, able to offer the quality of the program you'd want simply because the economies of scale and the numbers. You know, I think Mr. Carey made a reference the other evening to a concert, but it's the same when you can't run some of your accelerated or advanced classes because you just don't have enough resources. Or at the other side, you can't run some of the programs for the students in the middle or the students who need some extra supports. And even that Yarmouth enrollment, we know, we're getting to that low spot. When you're in the mid-3,000 range, that's the sweet spot for economy of scales, as a superintendent will often talk. And so the value, I think, for our regional agreement is saying both communities benefit. And we know that reality of each school, each district trying to run their own schools would offer less to those students. So working together to something that's viable and manageable for both our communities really gets us the best programming possible. And, you know, certainly, we are, we have more experience with this struggle, but if you talk to the folks in a neighboring regional school district with a large school and a small school and, I mean, a small town, and that town had no live births last year, those same Democrat, demographic trends are, you know, creating stress. But your point's well taken about that decline.
Yeah. And, and I, and I guess in the context of, you know, the proposed 6832 for fiscal '20, the 6832 split, I certainly appreciate the efforts of the school committee on, in that regard. It, you know, we're still faced, unfortunately, with somewhere between 600,000 and a million, if we go with the original formula. 600,000 and a million dollar override. And, you know, we're, we're struggling with that. We're struggling with how do we talk with our taxpayers about a third consecutive override? And, you know, we've, we fit about half of it in last year into our budget. And, you know, I don't, I don't know that we're going to be willing to do that this year. So we're, and I'm, I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just explaining the facts as they exist, you know, and, and I don't know what our community, how our community will react to it at this stage. So, you know, I hope there's, I don't know if there's anything more that can be done. But, you know, I think certainly, you know, looking at the future trend as well in the regional agreement that's proposed, you know, I, I don't know if there's anything that can be done there that will even, even the, the situation out, you know, I just don't know. But, you know, whatever you've got on the table now is what we're dealing with, I guess, at this stage, so.
I think the projected numbers look pretty good for Yarmouth. Not that we can go that many years out.
I understand.
But, you know, I mean, I applaud the work of the school committee. Frankly, I think that they, they try, they're trying very, very hard to get to a point, and they can speak for themselves, but to get to a point where we can at least say to the taxpayers, you got to look out, this is the first step in a multi-year step plan.
Yep.
And, you know, I guess it'll be up to everybody who goes to town meeting and whatever you all decide.
I think one of the other pieces, too, that we have to be cognizant of for next year is, they, they mentioned in their presentation is the, about a 10% budget savings, which is about $750,000 that they didn't have this year because of the savings with the municipal health group. That won't be there next year. Chances are, you know, another 750,000 in addition will be added to the budget just to, just to cover that.
Was that 750 in there?
It's 750.
750 is not in there.
Somewhere about there. Is that what you said? I'm sorry, maybe I didn't have that number right, but I think it was somewhere about that.
Well, that's the money that we're getting back, but that's on the overspending on the drug...
What was the savings for the, I'm sorry, then I missed...
You look for the annual increase in the, what would normally be what we were projecting for...
Approximately $750,000. Yep. And so, you know, we, we got relief. And so in the future, right, it will look like there's been a giant jump. There's that dilemma again, but people will be scratching their head going, what the heck happened? Because look at that number. You know, so the great savings for this year, we'll spend most of next year planning how we're going to accommodate and adjust for the changes that will happen, absolutely. And yet, I'm a big believer in the, you know, one step at a time gets us a little closer to a much more manageable situation for everybody.
I think that's also a piece that's actually in the governor's budget to try to help. That's one of the things that they've, in the formula, that's been underfunded at the state level.
Correct. As well as transportation, that could help a little bit. And I know they're working on the foundation budget again, so maybe we'll see something in the next year or two on that.
Yeah. You could, also, it's horrible because I know that all of us are looking for predictability and some stability, but it's almost like you're stuck with one year at a time because you just don't, it's difficult to plan, which is hard for everyone.
All right. Well, unless there are further questions from the board, this is a public hearing, and so we need to open up for public questions or comments.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I got a couple of questions. Tom Sullivan, precinct one. Back on your chart, Diego, back to your maintenance budget, if you could, please. Maintenance was $4,443,000 in fiscal '18, but last year you cut it. And now we're back up to over $500,000 increase on the budget. Why did you cut it last year when you know the schools were in such bad condition?
I think that represented a philosophical, difficult decision for the school committee. And again, in an ideal world, we would not have had to do that. We knew the tremendous pressure the communities were under last year. And so, again, I wish we, as a committee, well, not on the committee, but the committee was able to have that luxury sometimes, that much like any other board. The previous group here kind of saying, oh, how come our group isn't considered important too? At the end of the day, with the limited resources, you try to take care of your core. Was it a one-year strategy to some extent? Yes. Have I think though it's continued for too long? So you're right. I guess it's easy to say we should not have done that, but what else would we have reduced? And so that was a decision to get a manageable budget across the finish line, to be candid.
Okay. Well, I'm doing my homework, especially with this agreement and stuff. I happen to look at Department of Regulations on education and it clearly states, under your own regulations, the schools are to maintain, the maintenance of their own facilities. And it's obvious that our school system has not been maintained for years, for years. And yet we see new people being hired, we see exorbitant pay raises going through, and yet now you're asking for multimillion dollar new school. If the schools were properly maintained, I don't think you need a new school. Dennis has already said, their finance committee, that they can redo the Wixson School. It can be maintained. That's part of the problem. Now, the other part of the budget, I saw, I saw in another, it's janitorial services. The dollar figure caught my eye. A million dollars? Is that a private company? Does it go out to bid?
It went out to bid, and that was the low bidder. It was less expensive than maintaining our own custodial force. Again, I represent, the reality is, when we had a labor force of the same size that was unionized, it cost probably more money when people looked at it and you're looking at benefits. Again, I think it represented, though, another compromise the system was making, trying to say, okay, how do we save money, protect the academic core? I would argue that the system has maintained buildings. I will keep it to a simple analogy. If you have a 50-year-old home, you can keep it clean, but at the end of the day, and you can do some plumbing upgrades here and there, but you know that eventually, after about 50 years, you know, in a school, we talk about mechanical, electrical, plumbing upgrades, but in a home, you going to sell that or you going to consider how do you get the next 50 years out of it? You're going to do that kind of work. You're going to do the roof. You're going to do the heating system. You know, my own home, we've put a new roof on because it was getting toward 30 years and we know if you let that go too long, it's a problem. We put a new furnace in. And luckily, in a home, that's a few thousand dollars versus, you know, a few million dollars. And so the buildings have been cleaned. Could we have done some more preventative maintenance here or there? Yes. And our, we have an incredible crew, Sandy Cashin and her team. And were they limited by limited funds? Absolutely. Is that the reason, though, we're replacing those buildings? It would be the same in Dennis, asking about a senior center or a highway barn here. At some point, they get to the end of their life expectancy and it's time to replace them. And so I would contend that, sure, we can do more and we should, but at the end of the day, the pure economics and the education of it, I have no illusions after living through a high school renovation. As soon as they move a brick, they find things. And the state will eventually tell people, this is what you have to do at this school and this is what you have to do at that school down the road. And my worry is, if we all worked through state requirements in the past, we'll end up spending more than it would have cost to do those buildings. Now, it might be 10 years out, it might be 12 years out. And many of us in this room probably, I guess, won't have to take the heat, one way or the other, about it. But at the end of the day, if we can get to a place where we're being most cost-effective by doing that, and yes, it was a difficult decision to reduce maintenance by a significant amount of money, and now we're balancing that back. So there's the jump up.
I have a couple more questions. I'll make them short, if I could, Mr. Chairman. On the, I think it's called a rolling assessment slide you had?
The five-year foundation rolling...
Foundation. That's based on this new agreement. Am I correct?
It's a moot point.
It's a moot point. It's what they're doing now.
No.
No?
It's not, not an option that the school committee voted to...
So the school committee decided not to use that rolling foundation? All right. So what are we looking at the bottom line and override dollar figures for the people town can understand this? Is it $600,000 override?
If, if the new agreement is accepted, then it's $600,000.
Okay.
If it's not accepted, it's a million.
A million dollar override?
Correct.
That's doubled, more than doubled of last year.
Yeah, but we also had a shift in student population. That's one of the...
Well, a couple of things on this agreement, if I may, just in case I couldn't make it public. The 60, the 35% on capital costs on the schools is a no-go. Everybody I talked to, it's got to be 50/50 with Dennis. Because they get a brand-new school, we get a brand-new school. Every taxpayer that I've talked to says it's fair, only fair. We're not asking for them to pay anything more than what we would pay for a new school. And the other section I have, I happen to notice it here tonight, in section nine, I don't think you should agree with this agreement. This is based on, in the chapter 71, section D. It's basically the same wording as the present agreement. The wording should be included in this agreement that, that it would go, subject to disapproval by the registered voters and the member towns at town meeting. The state law states that. And that should be written into... in the member towns at town meeting, the state law states that. And that should be written into our agreement. So they can turn around and twist it like they have been and went with the ballot question. That's only a suggestion that I make to the board. Just go back to the drawing board before town meeting and have that inserted in there. Because I really think that it should clearly stipulate that go, the school committee cannot bypass town meeting, and it goes before town meeting. Because this thing, as you know, has been twisted.
Okay. I understand, Tom. Thank you.
Otherwise, I would not, I turn around and tell you not to vote and support this agreement. Have you go back to the drawing board.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, are there other comments or questions? It's really questions, more than comments. But yes.
Well, I do want to start with a comment. It's been at least 10 years that Dennis people have been out there in the public berating Yarmouth for not wanting to educate children and not paying their fair share of the budget every year as we came to this time of year. And it turns out that we were not only paying our own fair share, we were paying Dennis's share for all those departed students from Dennis. We should require, I mean, we should demand an apology from them. This is ridiculous. And I don't know why it took this long for us to finally, for somebody to wake up and find out that that's what's been going on. And that's why we had all these numbers that, with all the overrides that came our way. Now, even, you know, when they finally found what the situation was, Dennis doesn't have the decency to go and use the.
Rita, is there a question there?
No, I just, I want to comment.
I understand. You know, I think it's, and I don't mean to put down your question or your comment. You know, I think it's been well discussed and dealt with. The school committee has taken that into consideration in their review. And I think we've got to look forward. And I know, you know, the issue with regard to what happened with charter and tuition students and who was paying for what, that certainly is an issue we've been dealing with for a number of years and have, and we brought it up quite a few years ago. Dennis also was upset, to say the least, with Yarmouth's decision to elect Chapter 70. And that created a sense of unfairness on the part of the Dennis taxpayers.
Well, that's history.
Well, let me finish. So there are, there are arguments you can make both ways. The point is, let's look to the future. Let's try and get something that both towns can work with and try to put the past behind us. And I think, if you have a question about the presentation, please ask it, but let's not just keep going backwards.
All right. So there are 39 new students coming into Yarmouth. And the superintendent told me at a school committee meeting, not one of them is coming from another district on the Cape, on the Cape. So I want to know who these students are. Where are they coming from?
I said, let me be clear. They are not school choice students. They live in the town of Yarmouth. Therefore, they have a right to be educated in the town of Yarmouth. And that's what we do. They're not school.
Right.
As Mrs. Morris indicated, I said that they were not coming from other towns. Doesn't mean that they didn't move here from Barnstable, move here from Harwich, move here from Chatham. They live in the town of Yarmouth.
Well, but if they came from those towns, then how come they're not choice students?
They live in the town of Yarmouth.
The difference, the difference, excuse me. The difference, Rita, is choice students live outside, currently, live outside of the district. These students do not live outside of the district. They live within the town of Yarmouth. Now, you.
But how did they become new students?
You can't point to one person or another. It's looking at the entire enrollment. The entire enrollment within Yarmouth went up by, is it 39, 39 students? Whether that was fewer graduating that were coming in, I don't know what the dynamics were. Whether it was people moving into town, I'm not sure. I don't think the school could tell you for sure. What the school could tell you, you know, probably is, okay, there are new names on the roster. But that occurs every year. There's a fluid movement of people in and out of town. So all we have, all we can do really is say, okay, the 39 students are additional. We've got to deal with them. The school has to educate them. It's our community's responsibility. So, you know, we have to accept that.
There's money involved here. I mean, if they're coming, if choice, we would be getting $5,000 per student.
And that's, I understand the frustration. It costs more. But, you know, if you look back over the history of the district over the last 25 years, there were periods of time where the district was adding significantly more students than that every year because the town was bursting at the seams. And had a difficult time housing and educating the additional kids coming into the community. That's just part of the dynamics of population change. So we just have to deal with it.
I just have one question. Did I hear correctly that the school district has drones?
We have two clubs that have small drones and use them for photography. And the maintenance department has a small drone, probably, I would assume, perhaps like the highway department here, for some checking of roofs and things. So yes, they're modest. But FAA regs require insurance.
Oh, there you go. That's gonna be my next comment.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee or the board at this time? Okay. Seeing none, any follow-up questions? Anything else from the board? Okay.
We have two more things that we have to discuss.
Well, I think we have to close the hearing, do we not? Reopened it? We just carried it over. But let's at least have the formality of closing the hearing.
It's a continuation from Tuesday.
Right.
And nothing else coming up is on that as well? Just the school?
Tonight, just, that was it, yeah.
Make a motion, close the public hearing.
Okay, those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does, Article 6, 7, and 19, those are specifically what at this stage?
Stabilization and, well, we need to.
6 is the budget.
We need to move that around, though.
Yeah, so 19 is going to become.
Become 5.
Become 5. Because that is the placeholder for the agreement.
Okay.
We have to vote on the agreement in order to have a chance to pass the amended budget.
Okay. All right.
And 7 is the stabilization fund.
Okay. All right. Did you want to talk about the stabilization fund at this time?
Yeah, I apologize that I didn't notice the memo in your packet. So Mr. Jenks passed it out tonight. As we were talking about earlier with capital, a lot of times, a few years ago, I know that the towns allowed Cape Cod Tech to start a stabilization fund. We're not asking to put any money in it now. And I've included in your packet a, the regulations on that, on that kind of a fund for a school district. One of the things that I know that it's helped Cape Cod Tech do is to save up some money so that this time, when they were starting to build their new school, they had some money set aside that they could help get their projects started without having to borrow right away. And sometimes, those sorts of things are helpful. The other piece that we have is just, oftentimes, we've had some emergency situations. Last year, I believe it was, the power went out at Mattakese. We were trying to still hold school. We had to rent a number of generators and things like that to keep school going so that we didn't have to cancel school. It turned out that it was an underground power line. But once it was on the property, it belonged to the school district. It did not belong to the power company. So in all of that, you know, if there had been some money in the stabilization fund, you can use it for those kinds of purposes for emergencies. We would still have to give you a report each year. The school committee has to vote to put money in it, has to vote to take money out, and so on and so forth. So it's not like an extra, hey, here's some extra money for you guys to spend however you want. That's not the case. But we think it would be prudent. There are things that we know, as people talk tonight, sometimes you know you're gonna have to replace a boiler. We just found out recently that even though the boilers at the high school are relatively new, they were put in when the building was renovated. There are five of them, I believe. And at the tune of about $8,000 apiece, the burners have to be replaced. And part of the reason is because they can't get the pieces and parts to this particular burner, boiler. It's not my area of expertise, excuse me. But, so there's $40,000 that is nowhere in our budget. But we should try to put some money away and think that that's gonna be a purchase, that we're gonna have to take care of sometime without always coming back to the two towns. Because that, I believe, will help the taxpayers in the long run.
Okay. Board have questions or comments on?
I have a couple of questions. So I think this is a great idea. And glad we're moving towards this because I think it's gonna be helpful. But this is not a capital stabilization fund. It's really a stabilization fund for any emergency. So I know all the examples you gave are for capital, but potentially, it could be operating as well.
Well, it says that in here somewhere, didn't highlight it for myself, but it talks a lot about money for which you would maybe borrow. So it's really.
Really capital.
More so capital because we would never borrow for our operating budget.
But I just, okay. So then, I don't know why it's not a capital stabilization fund, but semantics, I guess. I guess I'm just nervous about this being used as a budget flow-through kind of scenario. So if it's for capital, I guess the percentage that's used, how, I know that, I'm not trying to get technical about it, but some of the schools are percentage-based. Some of them are, yeah, so either it's a district school or it's not a district school. So would this only be used for district schools? Or how would that work? So say Emmy Small had an emergency.
Well, I think that, again, would have to be up to the school committee. Here's where it says it, it's at the very end. The stabilization fund may be appropriated by a vote of two-thirds of all members of the regional district school committee for any purpose for which the regional school district may borrow money. So, you know, it still impacts the budget. Last year, when we had to fix the school, fix the Mattakese situation, that came out of our budget. A budget that Dennis contributed to.
Right.
So.
So that's what I'm wondering, if this is just going to be a stopgap until you go to the town and ask for reimbursement? Or how do you see it playing out?
I really don't know if there'll ever be a time that you could really go and ask for reimbursement. When we had a similar problem over in Dennis the year prior, they were willing to help us out. We split it with them 50-50. It's, so it impacted our budget less. But I think these things, these sorts of things are always gonna come up. Let me use another example that might be helpful. This would be a regional situation. The track over at the high school is going to need some updating in the not-too-distant future. I don't know how much that's going to cost. But if we could put a little bit of money in, it might offset what we might have to ask people for in the future. Or it might be able to even take care of the whole cost if we were able to save long enough. I don't think there's, there can be a really a specific piece about whether it's just, because emergencies can happen anywhere. If we have an emergency at Emmy Small, we gotta, we have to take care of it. We have not come back. Excuse me, but we have not come back to ask for reimbursement for things that have gone wrong in the past.
Well, I mean, I guess my own perspective is if Yarmouth's paying 70% of the budget that's going into it, and it's being used for Dennis schools, I don't have a problem with that because I think we need to move forward and get things fixed in a more expeditions manner. But some credit, some keeping track of how it's being expended, I think, as a look back to make sure that it's.
There's actually a report to both towns, to both boards of selectmen on an annual basis.
Okay.
I guess on that same subject, we, the last board meeting, we talked about, since we had had a fairly small capital request with regard to a couple of the schools that Yarmouth is responsible for, Station Avenue and Emmy Small, we had talked about establishing a portion of our capital fund as designated for capital expenditures for the schools, for those schools. We haven't settled on that, but there was some discussion about it. And I guess, I'm not sure how we would then deal with, all right, if we're funding our own capital for the schools that are primarily for our students, then, you know, what is the use of the stabilization fund?
Well, it seems to me.
I guess I would echo, you know, Tracy's concern about the allocation then. Because, you know, if Dennis doesn't come up with his own capital fund for its elementary school, then that means Yarmouth is gonna be sharing in that.
Right. I hear what you're saying. And I think there's a way on paper to keep track of, let's say, for example, this allocation that you made, possibly would make this year, would go on the Yarmouth side of the ledger in this capital, in this, excuse me, stabilization fund. I think of this more as capital. That's why I mistakenly keep using that word. But I, it seems to me, I mean, we do that record-keeping all the time now with the two towns with their capital expenses every year. We already keep that kind of a record. So I think, I think we could do it with record-keeping, truthfully.
And perhaps instead of stamping our own capital for the schools, we could fund.
Sure.
Their stabilization to a.
Yeah, you know, I'm wondering, as we, I think we need to have some more discussion about the mechanics of this from the standpoint of, well, they're gonna be, if you build it into your budget, then what happens is every year, it accumulates at the same amount. Whereas if you're allocating from some other source, you know, if both towns have free cash, is there some agreed-upon allocation for that purpose? That might, so that, you know, if free cash goes down because of economic times, then the allocation to stabilization would go down as well. I'm thinking out loud. I'm not, just trying to address the issues of fairness and source of funding.
If I may, I was, was the town envisioning something where then you would say, oh, these are the projects you work each year with that capital? I think the primary piece for the school side would be those little emergencies that cost you $25,000. That's really why I think the starting out with the capital stabilization for us is that piece. I know the usual capital request might be something down the road. Once this got larger, we could say to the towns, how do you want us to approach that?
Well, I guess part of the discussion we had last week was, you know, we know that Emmy Small needs a roof. But it's not in the request. And we don't want to surprise our taxpayers with, okay, here's another million and a half dollars you gotta spend on Emmy Small. So if it makes sense, and it was in our free cash plan, would it make sense for us to set that kind of money aside? Or perhaps rearrange other capital requests? set that kind of money aside, or perhaps rearrange other capital requests? Well, you know, and again, this is just the beginning of the discussion, but, but it all comes down to stabilizing-
Yes.
Rather than having zero for capital requests, recognizing that, you know, we gotta, we gotta do something here.
I, I endorse the idea, because you may remember, or even if you don't remember, there were times when we had a, a ceiling collapse at the old South Yarmouth Elementary. We've had urgent repairs to Mattokeys when it roof collapsed, we've had problems when flooding takes place, takes place in the gyms. Obviously Baker was a, very much of an emergency. And it might be useful to have a, a sit-down workshop environment where this could be worked out, particularly when we had a similar thing, when it came up when we changed the leases, or when the towns, one of the leases changed from five years to 15 years. And so a memo of understanding at least would be applicable, and we could not have to worry about making applications to capital outlay in Dennis, capital budget in Yarmouth as much, because we would have a slow buildup of resources available. It's still money from the public domain, but it would be easily seen where the need would be, and accountability would be obvious as well.
Sure. Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, Tracy, did you have other questions? Okay.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I, no, I, I would just like to say, I think it's a great idea, and I think the details are just something to get worked on, but I think, we all know there's going to be an emergency, something's gonna need to be done. I think having a budget to draw from, to help with those capital improvements makes a great deal of sense. So I think it's a good idea, I'll certainly support it, and it's just a question of just working out the details. So.
Mike?
I support it in concept as well. To Carol's point, it seems to contemplate capital improvements, because it talks about the two-thirds voted of the school committee for any purpose for which regional school districts may borrow money. But then it does have an additional provision that says, or for such other district purposes the commissioner of elementary and secondary education may approve. So that's the fluid part of it.
That's unclear to me, too.
Wait and see what, what if anything they do in terms of authorizing it beyond, beyond capital items, but I, I would like to see that account if, if established dedicated to capital.
Okay. Yep.
Is, this is a article?
Yes, it is.
Which, go, do we know?
The number's not necessarily clear at this stage.
Make a motion-
Yeah, the number may, actually, I think if, if this works right, Article Number Five is the septic article, we might just replace that with 17.
I thought you just said 19 was being replaced with five, so this one's gonna be-
19, I think, is a DBW article, isn't it?
So this, this will likely become Number Eight. It's currently seven, it'll likely-
Recommend the school stabilization fund article, whatever number it is.
Okay, do we have a second? No, seconded. Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I guess the next item is the district agreement discussion. Did, I don't know if you wanted to go through the agreement, if there were any highlights you wanted to touch on, I mean, we don't have to go through it line by line, but if there are highlights in the prospective agreement, it might be helpful just to touch on those.
I just, can I just ask whether or not our council has reviewed the proposed-
No.
He has not.
So I will say, the school district council has looked at it, not that we don't wanna have another opinion. And this is currently at the DESE so that they can review it as well, because what we don't wanna do is ask our voters to vote on something and then find out that the commissioner won't sign it. The member that was from Yarmouth that's here, that was on the subcommittee, is Mr. Sullivan, so I think it's most appropriate for him to address this, but I'll help wherever possible.
Sure. So, I guess I first like to say that, you know, a lot of work went into this, it wasn't just our school committee, obviously, a lot of the work was already done by the, by the joint committee between the towns, and, you know, we started off in our subcommittee looking at, you know, all the changed language going line by line, and we did clean up a lot of the stuff that was not necessary, outdated language from the 70s, et cetera. And then we tried to focus in on things that we thought maybe could use either a better language, some of the, some of the pronouns weren't accurate anymore, so we fixed that. And then, of course, we got to the nuts and bolts of capital and operating. In the capital assessment, we pretty much wanted to go with what everybody already thinks is an accurate way to split capital expenses, and that is, the buildings that are in the confines of each town remain the responsibility of that town, that's somewhat ambiguous in the old agreement. So that was fixed, and then we addressed both the Mattokeys and the Wixen issue, if they continue to become schools, that they're also still within the boundaries of each town, and they'll be the responsibility of the town which they reside. We moved on to the middle school project, should that be built, and that was quite a complex discussion. There were several possibilities where we could've gone with that, just, you know, splitting administrative portions of the building, the gym, the auditorium, site work, all those things. And, you know, we worked on several spreadsheets and concluded that, doing all the math related to that, it pretty much wound up being a 65-35 split. So we felt that that was an accurate and fair and equitable way of, of coming to an agreement that not only the people in Yarmouth could support, but also the people in Dennis could support, because as you know, should one town not support this, we don't get a new agreement. So that was part of the process, and that was always a part of the process as we were doing this, is not just, hey, this is, you know, I'm a Yarmouth member, right, so I'm, I'm trying to get the best deal for us. And I was aggressive at first, because I felt that was my responsibility, but I also have to consider the fact that, on the other side of the table, this has to pass in another town, and it's gonna be a difficult vote for them over there. They're gonna be asked to pay more money that they don't have to pay if they just vote no, right? We can't do anything about it. So we, a lot of that went into how we came up with that, and I think a lot of care and effort and sincerity went into it as well. So then we moved on to the operating part, which was just as equally difficult to, to come to a conclusion on. I liked the idea of using the five-year rolling average this year, and then splitting it 65-35 for the remainder of the contract. However, there was some discussion with the Dennis members that doing such a significant shift all at once would prevent the agreement from passing in their town. So we compromised a bit and rolled it out over five years, I think it was five years, four years?
Four years.
Five years. And that was actually language that we had discussed in our two-town meeting, of Dennis was interested maybe in stretching it across five years, or three years, or whatever their, their goal was. I've done a significant amount of work on trying to figure out where this put us compared to where we were, and what we were trying to achieve when we had the two-town committee. And I think this is a pretty good deal for us. I don't want to say too much in public, because I'm mindful of the repercussions of that, but I think it's very good for us, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Maybe some of them I could answer in private.
I have a couple of specific questions, having read through this, and, you know, a lot of the changes are familiar, but in one area where you're dealing with a vacancy in the school committee?
Correct, yep.
I think the intent was to have a, a committee of the select board and the school committee appoint a person. This is on page three of the agreement, at the bottom. That's, that's the section?
Correct, yep.
And the wording, I'm unclear, it says, it says, "If vacancy occurs, such vacancy shall be filled within 30 days, therfrom by the board of selectmen and the school committee." "The school committee chair will appoint an appointment committee consisting of two members of the, members of the town's board of selectmen of the member town in which each, in which the member vacating, dah 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 dah, and three school committee members." "Each board will select from their membership those who will comprise the appointment committee." "The school committee will select two members from the town where the vacancy exists, and one member from the other town."
Correct.
So is that, is that a selection? Let's say there are three candidates.
Right.
Is that a selection committee?
Yes.
Narrowed down to one person of the three?
That would be like an unexpired term, so somebody steps down before their term is up. It would be two members of the board of selectmen, say if it's a, say it's a Yarmouth person, two members of the board of selectmen, three school committee members. Two of the school committee members would be from Yarmouth, one would be from the other town.
But who would make the appointment?
You guys would choose amongst yourselves, the school committee would choose amongst themselves.
See, this doesn't say that. This, my comment in the margin to that was, how does this operate? This is totally confusing. It just says how you'll appoint people, but it doesn't answer the ultimate question as to who makes the appointment and by what kind of a vote? Is it a simple majority vote, or what is it, and who are the voting members? That's not addressed, this is a very poorly written provision.
We can send it back to our attorney to get it-
What's the intent?
Improved.
What's the intent?
What's the intent, yeah?
I think the intent was to allow some of the school committee members to be part of the process, and to be able to ask, to find qualified candidates, because our job is a little bit different than, than the selectmen, so we wanted to have the, the town have their portion of the selectmen, and then the school committee, which, you know, has a whole different set of rules and, and different role, be part of the process. I'll be honest, this wasn't my, this wasn't my chapter, I wasn't opposed to it either, so.
I have a problem with the person from the other town, because, I mean, ultimately, they're representing the people of Yarmouth or Dennis, so why would the opposing town have, I mean, that's not how they're elected, when the election-
Well, I don't know, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, it's not the way the process has worked in the past, and I understand, I listened to, to the full committee have a discussion about it, and I think, you know, the way that we do it with all of our other committees is that they do interviews and they make a recommendation to this board. And I thought Jenny's comments about, you know, the school committee being involved in something where they're potentially could be running against the same person may impact that, and I thought that was a, a great point. But I have no problem with the school committee being involved, but I think the clear delineation of the appointment needs to be made, and I really have no, I, I don't understand the need for the alternate town participation.
I don't remember how we got to that, to be honest with you.
I don't think Dennis would want-
Has to do with the numbers. Has to do with the numbers.
Well, you don't want an even number on a thing, 'cause then you'd have a, you could potentially have a split vote, so maybe you have all members from that town's school committee representative, or whatever, I'm not sure, but this-
But if the, since we only have three members in Dennis, if one member was gone, there would only be two. So in order to have, you know, three school committee members, you'd have to have one from Yarmouth.
Well, I found it interesting that they, that you guys spent a lot of time on that particular provision, and not a provision on recall.
We did work on the recall provision as well, but it was determined that, by, on advice from our attorney, that the school community is somehow a state entity, and it's not allowable under-
I don't believe that to be true.
That's, that's what I was told, and I have no other choice but to take the legal advice, as was given. I did talk to Attorney Waugh on the phone about that, actually, on a conference call, so he's, he stood by his advice, and I have no, no reason not to believe him.
So, so what this does is it talks about constituting a committee.
Yeah.
And that's it. It doesn't say what the committee does, it doesn't say who makes the appointment.
You know, I guess I-
It's almost like the last half of it's missing.
I guess reading this, I, I thought, okay, so that's a selection committee that's gonna recommend to the board of selectmen, who currently has that power, a final candidate, or final two candidates, or something of that nature.
Historically, when it was before regionalization in 1975, there was a Dennis Elementary, Yarmouth Elementary, and a DY High School. And the, if there was a, and each committee, there was a, there was, it was an eight-member or 10-member committee, two of those three committees. When they regionalized, they had an 18-member committee to pick a superintendent, and what they evolved was, if there's, on the new joint DY K-12, the school committee, if there was a vacancy due to a, somebody leaving, or whatever, it was a meeting of the full board, of the, board of selectmen of the town that lost their representative. And initially, the first five years after that, it was kind of understood that they would ask the school committee to do interviewing and then make a recommendation. It was left unstated during the regionalization discussions back in the mid-'70s, where role the school committee would have, if any. What we were, I was not part of the subcommittee, and in the discussion that you were, you attended, Tracy, I was suggesting, we discuss the idea of another person from the other town, school committee person or not, it was not as important as just having a school committee, one or two members sitting in with the selectmen of the losing town to put their perspective into the decision of who to nominate, or correction, who to select to fill out the membership. And I think somewhere in the discussion, the verbiage did not come out as clear as it could be, and I would, myself would recommend and support running it by our attorney and letting you see that as well.
Just to clarify, I'm looking at the current regional agreement language, and it's just as ambiguous, so unfortunately, it didn't occur maybe to us that we should be more clear. We just kinda added, looks like a paragraph that created the, a new subcommittee, and that was probably about it. So, yeah, the old, the old language is, it's basically, this is just spliced into the middle, and instead of saying the board of selectmen, it says a new subcommittee.
The original language simply said it would be filled within 30 days by the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, period.
Right.
And then it's, it said the person so appointed has to be a resident from the town from which the vacancy occurred, and shall serve until the next election. And that was what the original provision said.
Yeah.
So, in any event-
It doesn't happen enough.
It'd be helpful if we knew what, what the intent was.
I think our intent was just to provide some people from the school committee that are doing the job, perspective on selection of candidates, because your job is much different from ours, you, you deal with different things, and we're dealing mostly with the school issues. So that was just to get a perspective of school committee members, and, you know, maybe questioning the candidate, or, you know, trying to determine why they're interested, that type of thing. It, it brings a different perspective, really, is, is what we were trying to do.
And you realize, of course, my references to the mid-'70s was when I was just a little kid, so don't make, don't wanna make a mistake there.
I guess the other question that I had is just a question regarding the amendments, which is on page seven. You know, that section of the agreement, I mean, there was an awful lot of discussion. That section of the agreement, I mean, there was an awful lot of discussion between, within the subcommittee, and I thought we had arrived at an agreement that there would be a review of the agreement every three to five years, and that, that would, and that that was agreed to by the towns. And now I see that it, it apparently is left very loose, says from time to time, and the School Committee Chair may appoint three members of the School Committee to a subcommittee to review the agreement and to make recommendations. And I just have, you know, I, I don't know why it came down to that kind of wording as opposed to a three to five-year, whatever, you know, whatever one was appropriate, review with, if there's this lack of agreement, a mediation process, because that's what's been a huge issue.
Right, so, I think, and I push for this language, and actually, this is one of the reasons I had to speak with Attorney Waugh. This is somewhat of a compromise. Three to, three to five years seems good for me. However, I don't think people wanted to be hemmed in by a date. They didn't feel comfortable with that. Now, there's a hundred reasons to argue to do it every fi, three years, I agree with you. But I think, in general, people are a little bit more comfortable with from, doing it from time to time, which means we could do it next year, or we could do it every five years. It's, it's pretty much primarily, in this case, up to the School Committee Chair. So, if the School Committee Chairs saw something in the community going on that required an amendment to the agreement, they formed this subcommittee. I'm going to be honest, I was adamantly opposed to allowing Selectmen to have, to do this. I was adamant about it. The reason why the School Committee was given this responsibility years ago is because of the situation we have going on right now, in my opinion. So, I think it still should be the responsibility of the School Committee, it just had to be a little bit more clear, because a lot of what's happening is a result of poor communication, et cetera. The School Committee is neutral territory. There's, we get along, we work, try to work together for the benefit of the schools and the children, whereas Boards of Selectmen aren't necessarily in that role. Your role is to advocate for your towns, and I commend you, you do a great job. But in this case, I think it was, in my opinion, it was better to keep it with the School Committee, and I was adamantly opposed to having Selectmen involved, so.
If I may also add in support of that, the School Committee is a legislative body, and both the U.S. Constitution, the Massachusetts Constitution, and all the supporting casework, meaning anybody can petition their legislative body, whether it be Congress, whether it be the State House, or whether it be the local School Committee, to consider a request. And in the ten times the Board of Selectmen of one town or the other has approached the School Committee about changes or considerations, the School Committee has either met as a committee of the whole or created a subcommittee to go over it. The School Committee, in practice, has never turned down a suggestion or a request or a look into a situation from the townspeople, in fact, or from the Selectmen, and sometimes even from a town department. There even have been requests from DPWs to mandate something or re-change something, sometimes just a memo of understanding was all that was needed. Historically, most regional agreements have the final authority to be the School Committee, followed by the Commissioner of Ed, or now the Commissioner of DESE, for, for approval, followed by the town meeting, if there is to be an actual change. So, my own support for that was based on that knowledge and experience.
I'd like to say first, by the way, I'm not opposed to having Selectmen on the subcommittee, I was for that, just the way it went about before, wasn't clearly defined in the agreement, wasn't clearly defined anywhere, and that's kind of how I think we got to a situation where one side wasn't showing up, because there was no, there was no rules to it. And that's why the whole, I remember we talked about, you know, super majorities of both boards, and that's where I thought that was a bad idea.
Well, I think that's, you know, the, the concern about one side not showing up or saying, look, we have an agreement. And just a lockout-
Right.
Is-
That's a problem.
That's driven a lot of the angst in this, and, you know, I think that that's a concern going forward. I don't like the looseness of, of the arrangement. I think we'll have to wait and see how it works. But, you know, I, I think there was a lot of thought, and actually, Clayon Turner came up with the language for the three to five-year review and the mediation. So, I don't know why it got, you know, changed.
You don't, you don't really need a mediator. If the, if the Chairman of the School Committee forms a subcommittee, and that subcommittee comes up with an amendment and recommends an amendment to the School Committee, the process is still the same. Unless we change the amendment language, it's still required four votes on the School Committee to pass. So, even if you went to a mediator, the towns, let's say the towns went to a mediator, it'll still have to pass by a majority of the School Committee, which there's no guarantee it would even come for a vote for the School Committee. Now, there's a process for that.
Yeah. But let's go with the scenario that, three years from now, the census dictates that Dennis' School Board representation will be down to two, because that's a significant likelihood that that will occur-
Yep.
-at this point. I mean, the supermajority on the board will be with Yarmouth.
Correct.
And I'm not sure, from Dennis' standpoint, why they would not want to have some sort of capacity to go to an outside party and say, look, we're getting hammered, whatever it may be, I don't know what it might be.
I think-
I, I just don't know why they would-
That's a different portion of the agreement for the, for makeup, for, for the numbers, the members on the committee, and it's addressed in the agreement as well on how that would happen, so it's, it is based on the census, and that's some of the language we took out, because there's no longer a state census, it's only a federal census, so we went through that whole section. You know, actually, I, we did discuss making up the committee in a different way now, but thought better to wait for the census to come out. That was a compromise as well.
But I think this, the census is a DESE requirement based on the state constitution of one man, one vote.
Correct.
And I'm not sure that that's something that can be changed.
But it has to be one man, one vote, and it, but it has to go by the census as well, so. Right, if, if you look at the estimates-
You know, I'm not saying my interpretation is the absolute, but I believe it's one man, one vote, and, and that's-
The estimates indicate we should pick up a seat in twenty twenty-one.
But I guess, all I'm saying is-
Let us not forget that when the regional agreement was first formed for the K to twelve school region, the ratio led to a ten-member School Committee, Dennis-Yarmouth School Committee, with seven Yarmouth members and three Dennis, because the ratio was almost seventy-thirty, it's like sixty-eight thirty-two. Six years later, the population of the Dennis kids at the, in the region had grown to a point where it was almost sixty-forty. So, the School Committee accepted a request from a Board of Selectmen to reexamine, one, changing it from a ten down to a seven-member committee, and changing the membership level. Instead of it being therefore sixty-forty, or I mean, you could have a School Committee of a hundred people, sixty of them from one town, forty from another, but realistically, in nineteen eighty-one or eighty-two, Yarmouth gave up two seats, Dennis gave up one seat, and one of the Yarmouth seats went over to Dennis, forming a four-three ratio.
That's all the more reason to have, to provide for periodic reviews.
Well, the periodic review doesn't even have to be in writing, it can be done by any-
All I'm saying, all I'm saying is, it goes both ways.
Okay, well, there is no-
The language in the agreement allows, when and if the census is completed, it will readjust. We don't have to amend the agreement to amend the committee.
I understand, right, no, but what I'm saying is, with Yarmouth having five out of seven members-
Yep.
The, if Yarmouth members voted entirely with Yarmouth, they could say, no, we're not going to form a committee, we got no reason to do that.
Well, it's up to the, it's up to, that's why it's up to the Chair.
Yeah, but that's what, that's what we're saying. What happens if the Chair's a Yarmouth Chair and you've got five Yarmouth members? All we're saying, all, all he's saying is, I think that this is good, but a second trigger, not to remove this, but in, in a, kind of a fallback, another option, in case you can't get movement, there should be another option. So, so, yeah, from time to time, you could have the School Committee Chair appoint the members, but what happens if they don't?
They don't have to.
They don't have to.
No, they don't have to, and there's no recourse for either town at that point.
That's correct.
So, that's, that's what I think Norm's getting to, is-
There's still, that's still, that's been the case always.
I know, that's what we're trying, and that's why we're here, we, that's, welcome.
I would have, I would have liked, I did actually have more language that was more complex, but like, you know, you go through the process and you're in, in a, in a subcommittee and you're talking and you're trying to work it out, and you, and you come up with a solution that's easy for everybody to understand and what they're willing to agree to. This is what we were willing to agree to, to bring to the committee, and then it was further debated and edited again, so.
But both towns had agreed on the original language about-
Right.
Right, but both towns, with all due respect, the folks that agreed to it were not on the School Committee, so that's the problem. Because the School Committee negotiated this whole thing, as a whole, right? So, that portion of this agreement is related to some other portion of our conversations that were all related together, and, you know, I would have loved to have a, an outline in how we came up with amending the agreement, but this is the language we came up with. Is it perfect? No. Is a lot of what we came up with perfect?
And both town meetings have to approve any changes, both.
Right. And that, that's, that's going to be the tricky part, and I know, you know, it's not perfect. Could we have done better? I don't know. I don't know if we could have, this is hard, because we have two towns that are going to be at polar opposite ends. All I can tell you is, I'm comfortable with that, it's better than what we have, what we have right now, we have no, there is no way-
Right.
-for anybody to bring an amendment to the committee. Does, there's no language for it. It just says, the School Committee may amend the, the document with a majority vote. Doesn't say how we create amendment, doesn't say who comes up with it, doesn't say any of that. So, now we have something, which is better than what we had, which was nothing.
Why, Mr. Chairman, to stay on the same topic?
Sure.
When Dennis walked out of the negotiating sessions, for lack of a better word, we were, we were getting, we were facing criticism in the press about, well, why, why doesn't Yarmouth go to mediation, and why doesn't Yarmouth go to arbitration, you know, what, why all these, are all these egos getting in the way? Simple answer was, there was no vehicle that was provided for in the agreement. So, during the course of the subcommittee negotiations, we wanted to put language in there so that this didn't happen again. And so, what we get is an agreement that overlooks that, even though it was discussed at great length with our subcommittee. And it says, from time to time, the School Committee Chair may appoint three members, or may not.
Correct.
It's like, you know, making a commitment that something will be done on the twelfth of never.
Correct.
It's totally, in my opinion, ineffectual language. I don't see what the big problem is about having a, a review date in the process.
One of the problems I have always felt in communicating with folks in the communities is the concept that somehow schools are a department within a town, and the problem with that is, particularly in a region, you can't have that, one town making a change and the other town not knowing it. Therefore, the School Committee is an autonomous government with no power to, and no power to put a budget forth without approval of the town meeting. As a School Committee member, I work for town meeting, I work for the town through the town meeting. Consequently, one Board of Selectmen having the power to make changes or to force a change runs the risk of, in a two-town region. Now, you notice in the regions like Nauset and Cape Tech, two-thirds of a, of the membership has to come together to approve a budget or to make changes, and the most unstable form is a two-town district, because one town's going to be bigger or have more finances than the other. The School Committee is the leveling instrument. Whether, if, if the, if a School Committee wants to treat its membership towns with disrespect by not listening to them, then, like any other legislative body, the membership may be voted out when they're running up for reelection. But more to the point, the School Committee has to go before town meeting to put their budget forth, and this town meeting has line item veto, correction, final, not line item veto, line item authority rest with the School Committee, but bottom-line veto power. And that came about from the nineteen eighty, power of Prop. Two and a Half and Ed Reform of ninety-three. So, the School Committee still retains some governmental control over its internal operations, and one of them being the, the structure with which they handle themselves. I remember watching the workshop when Bill Hinchey was Town Administrator, and he was wondering why the regional agreement couldn't be treated like a contract between two towns, but it's not a contract, it's a government charter. The word from the Speaker of the House was, a School Committee is a state agency elected locally. So, consequently, some of the difficulties we're having over the years has been the role of the School Committee in relationship to the town. At best, we are partners and we have to listen to each other, but we all work for the townspeople who are our boss.
Just for the record, the proposal was a supermajority of both Boards of Selectmen. Not one town was trying to-
No.
To do-
One town, when one town couldn't do anything behind the back of the other, because they have to go to, both have to go to the town meeting.
That was the proposal.
And even with our subcommittee, I mean, we had representation from both towns, both finance committees, both School Committees, everything, you know. You couldn't have a, a more fairly constituted body than that. So, so I, I don't understand this, I don't understand what the reluctance is, but there is clearly no mechanism in here to resolve the kind of disputes, if you will, or, or differences of opinion that have occurred between the two towns in the past. This, this Chair, whoever it may be, may or may not constitute a subcommittee. It's very arbitrary, very whimsical.
All right, do we have any other questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. One of the questions was related to Tom's question about the previous agreement talking about debt being incurred specifically by town meeting.
Correct, we didn't touch that paragraph at all that I'm aware of, so it would be just left alone.
It's on page eleven.
That's the same as-
Section nine.
And just for the record, a quick Google search showed the first, the first regional agreement that came up was Blackstone Valley, page twelve, talks about recall of its members, so. It's, it is allowed by law, it's in several regional agreements.
We did talk to the attorney, that's all I can tell you, that's pretty totally-
I'm just putting it out there, it's not, to me- It's not, to me, worth.
I'm, I'm all for having a recall, don't get me wrong, but if the attorney says we can't put it in there and the committee doesn't vote for it, then there's nothing we can do.
Well, unfortunately, here we are, we're at the last minute, and, you know, it's hard, we're not trying to.
Yep. We did, we discussed it for a significant amount of time.
Yeah. I, I guess the, the understanding that I'm, that I'm getting at this point, that it's a take-it-or-leave-it document.
It is, absolutely.
Well, thank you for all your work on it. Appreciate it.
So, at this point, are you going to clarify what happens with the vacancies?
We can do that.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Mark's questions.
Oh, sorry. I thought, no, I thought we already covered your questions.
You already covered me?
Yeah.
I'm way down here in the brood ducts.
Yeah, I know.
Over here. First of all, um, I do want to thank you for all the work that you put into this. You said it wasn't perfect, and obviously it's not, but it is a substantial step forward. In my brief tenure here on the board, this has been probably the most difficult issue, and I look at this agreement as probably the fairest agreement I've seen, and I think it's a, a significant and honest effort to try to bring an end what has been an incredibly contentious and difficult chapter, and so I certainly applaud you for that. I support the agreement, I will stand behind it. You're right, there's some things that need to be clarified, and I think if there's a way with your counsel, maybe to clarify some things, I think that would be certainly helpful, but I don't have any questions. I think that quite, we've heard pretty much, that just, I think, of some of the, some of the, the key ones, but, but by and large, I, I, I support this, I want you to know that, I appreciate the work that went into it, and I'm anxious to see us get this chapter behind us and move on to other more productive chapters as well. So, thank you.
I'll make a recommendation that we recommend the proposed new regional agreement.
Second.
I have a second. Um, I would like to say, uh, one more thing before we move to a vote. I agree with, with Mark's comment, I think a lot of work went, went into it. Thank you, Brian, for your particular participation. I know Brian Carey and Joe Tierney worked hard at this as well as, as well as the total committee and, and under difficult circumstances, and so.
It was, we did put a lot of time and effort in, and I, and I appreciate your comments, because, trust me, they're not lost, but you have to realize, when you're in negotiations, things, things happen.
And, and I also know if everybody came out thinking it was great, somebody.
Somebody would be mad, right.
Would be unhappy, that's right. So, you know, we, I, I think it lays a basis for moving forward. The challenges for the future for the school committee in our community are not going to stop with this, this agreement.
Sure.
I mean, the, the trends in population that, that I think, Carolyn, Ken, you talked about, um, if, if you believe the projections of the Cape Cod Commission, we could be looking at twenty years from now, five hundred less students. And the, the challenge in our facility planning, uh, to deal with that drop in population, and with most of that coming, that reduction coming from Dennis, uh, so there's going to be pressures well into the future that probably are not going to be resolved by this agreement. I don't know how, how they'll be resolved, very honestly, but, and I, and I think the expectations of our community and the Yarmouth taxpayers have to be realistic, that even with this revision, and even, even if it does provide some sort of, uh, short-term benefit, they may not last into the future, long-term. Because if somebody is severely impacted, they're going to raise their hand and say, things have got to change here. So, um, I think we have to be realistic, I think this is a, a damn good start, and, and, you know, there'll be some tweaks in the future, but, you know, the challenges ahead are significant.
And I for one, want to thank you, because in addition to these issues, you've got small things like clean water, affordable housing, uh, and so on. I, it's a full plate all the time.
Yeah. Thanks, Phil, I appreciate that. But thanks again for the work that you did, and it's, it's been, been tough on everybody, so thank you for coming through with that. All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay. Thank you.
You said it. Carol's like, can I go now?
[laughing].
Well, you'll appreciate that I was, you'll appreciate that I was in Amherst today at a meeting with all of the commissioner, the commissioner, and, uh, so I had to scurry back, I left at two-thirty to get back here in time, so.
All right, well, thank you.
It's been a full day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Those questions, give the answer, give them to the end, funnel for people, about placements and the monies and all that, is that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Dan will go.
The final version.
We'll work through it.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to free cash.
I think Mr. Dwelly has an updated free cash, uh.
Yes.
Handout for you.
I do. Everyone but Mr. Stone has received it. Here you go. My revision is the very last.
It was transmitted to us, actually, you know, I don't think I have a copy of that, if you don't mind. I might, but I don't have it readily handy. Do you have a copy?
There you go, Dan.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, I think the, yes, item, the very last item came to us on Friday last week. It's the request by the school department for the bond anticipatory note. We don't have any other way to accommodate that if the school were to advance, so we've proposed that we would allocate, if, for preventative reasons, the sum of two-eighty-two, two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, twenty-six dollars related to that from free cash, so it can be potentially transmitted to pay our obligation if, depending upon the lawsuit, in, sometime in the January of next year. If we did not have this placeholder for this item, we'd have, in the, school proceeds, we'd have to come up with some way to find that money within the operating budget.
Or a special town meeting.
Or a special town meeting, that's correct. So that being said, um, there is a plan for a fall town meeting. It would be scheduled such that we would have free cash known at that time, but this is, uh, this is a, a way to address it early on.
Yeah.
The other item you might notice, well, you wouldn't notice it, because we took it off, was the bathrooms for the Council on Aging. It's recognized by administration from both commentary from capital budget and the Board of Selectmen that that work, that project needs, uh, further vetting out, and that'll be done, uh, over the course of the next few months.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question about, you know, that, I, I saw a fifteen-page design. How did the design get funded?
My understanding, it was through a, a donation account.
Yeah, the Friends of the Senior Center had offered up a sum of money, over thirty thousand dollars, to advance that, so, um, to get it started, we used the donation for, some of the donation for the architectural rendering, because it has to start with that.
You know, I, I think we need a board financial policy with regard to capital expenditures that are initiated and funded outside of, uh, our taxpayers' funds, you know, because it, you know, we seem to have departments getting ahead of themselves with, um, uh, these sorts of things, and it comes, you know, we, we get the bums rush here with, it felt like that, I think the board felt like that, on, on, you know, let's, let's take two-hundred thousand dollars on something that hasn't passed the capital committee and put it into free cash. Um, you know, and I just.
I don't think we were asking for that.
And I don't want to speak for the director of the Senior Center, but my understanding was, the idea was to use that donation, uh, those donations that were available to help build that plan, to provide that to the capital budget committee, to provide them with information so that they could make a decision. I don't believe the timing worked out, but my understanding was, that was the intent, is they just wanted to be able to better articulate their plans so that the decision-makers could make a decision on the project.
Well, you know, I, I guess, um, you know, with, with a lot of the departments that, that need a major expenditure, they come to us, talk about the concept, and then, uh, they come back to us with a more detailed analysis of the design requirements, and then we fund those in some manner. Um, you know, what, what seems to be happening in this case is that there, that, you know, it's, it's getting way down the road before we get to weigh in on it and, and look at the priorities, and I just, uh, and I can only speak for myself in terms of, you know, how, uh, level of discomfort with, um, being faced with something of that nature, that's all.
I'd like to make sure that we have a new sound system. Call me anything, but not, don't call me not persistent.
Um, I filed that with the splash pad, and I will make a ten-dollar bet that you'll get your sound system before the splash pad.
All right, because it seems we could add it here if we needed to.
I'll tell you what, I was at the Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting yesterday at, next to the jail, at, and, um, brand-new conference room, it's about the size of this room, uh, maybe a little larger, with, um, tables, speaker units that are like this, that are very clear, very easy to operate, um, with TV screens, each one about the size of that table, facing the people on all sides of the, this U-shaped table, where all the participants are lined up, so that you're looking at the agenda and all the things on these TV screens.
I'm thinking more just like a couple of speakers that the public can hear.
I know you are. All I, all I'm saying is that, that.
Memorial Day ceremony, for instance.
There, I think the, I think the Cape Cod Commission has a lot of funding from us.
And the splash pad issue is because that was approved at town meeting, and it was, it was ignored.
We all paid for that nice conference room, I, I've heard varying estimates of the cost, I cannot wait till the day I want.
I can't imagine.
That's correct.
I can't imagine.
The county project is what I would talk about.
Yep, yep. All right, um.
So that, so you're saying this, the seniors' dinner's been removed from this.
It's been removed.
With this consideration for further refinement. To build off of the capital recommendations in your packet is a memo from the capital budget committee. They did meet after, they were before you a few weeks ago, to make a final vote on the requests that are capital in nature. They approved all of them as detailed in your memo, with the exception, they reiterated their position on the senior center bathroom, which was exactly what Dan has just articulated. And one caveat relates to the Station Two meeting rooms, which were discussions between the fire chief and our facilities director when they did a site visit over there, that they felt that the nineteen thousand dollars for the Station Two meeting rooms request be allocated for repairs or replacements to the stairs that, to the entrance of the building.
I'll make a recommendation that we approve the free cash recommendations put before us.
Are you going to add the speaker system to the?
Well.
We'll get it done.
Would the board also like to add, at the finance director's recommendation, just a placeholder for seventy-five thousand dollars for short-term borrowing if it's needed. If it's not needed, after this is approved, it would just essentially roll into next year's free cash and would be available again.
I think it's important that we add that.
Seventy-five thousand for?
The borrowing costs, carrying costs for, in case we cannot set the tax rate, because of.
Oh, yeah, 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 I think we have to. Just, you know, the, some of the terminology here are going, it's going to be, uh, difficult for, um, I think our voters to understand. When we say something is a shortage, you know, um, I think people's, uh, concerns start arising when I see a three-hundred thousand dollar shortage.
Um, one of the, understood, it'll not read that way, um, understood.
Yeah, I, you know, I, yeah, as long as we're, um, sensitive to the implications of, of that wording, I think that's important.
Do we need a second?
Yeah.
I'll second.
I think so.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
With the addition of the seventy-five thousand.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, moving forward with free cash. So the next item on the agenda is the, uh, review of Article twenty-one. Good evening.
So we've asked, uh, for the DNR representation, that members of their union leadership attend the meeting. I have a couple of handouts to pass over to you. The first one is the draft language that's been developed, we'll explain that, but I'll pass that out to you now. On the article, the second document that I'm going to pass out is the memo that I sent to you yesterday. I, I printed out another copy, just so if we have to make reference to various elements within the retirement system terminology. The third document came to me today, I've asked Director Von Hohn to produce for us a chart that outlines the annual and initial training that a DNR officer goes through, and that's coming around now. The last thing I have for you came to me tonight, and this is a statement of recommendation or support of this article for the DNR officers from Representative Whalen's office. Prior to the meeting, and I believe also in the packet, is part of the documentation for this topic, is the actuary report that we received related to the retirement assessment from Siegel, the consultant that we use for that. That came to us last week at some point, and it delineates for us the difference between, for our actuary assessment, for a group-one retirement versus a group-four retirement. The purpose of the memo I sent yesterday was to explain the difference, I mean, you could boil it down essentially to the idea that typically, group-one employees, in order to get the full benefit load of a two-point-five, or point-two-five multiplier, have to get to age sixty-five, a group-four employee has to get to age fifty-five. If you were hired after April, I think it was April fourth of twenty-twelve, it's sixty-seven for group-one and fifty-seven for group-four. The other caveat there is, prior, for those employees hired before that April twenty-twelve date, pension liability is accrued related to the highest three-year average for those folks hired after that. It's based on the highest five-year average, those. Those adjustments were made to the state pension system to help alleviate some of the concern that was going on related to spiking at the end of someone's career, and also to recognize the fact that people typically can stay healthier longer, can work longer, and they made those adjustments to help make the pension system more healthy. And the last thing, within the Siegel report, they identify the actuary result, and Chris, I don't have it in front of me, but if you could pull that up and share with me the numbers, that the DNR, the average age of the employees is somewhere in the neighborhood of about 43 years.
Correct.
And 17 years of service, so they were all hired, I would imagine they were all hired before that 2012 date, so they're on the highest three-year average. And the impact to the assessment for the retirement system is also listed in the report, if you have that number, Chris, on group-one versus group-four?
It is, yep.
What that number is?
Yep. So the memo from Siegel Consulting is our actuarial firm, on page two, at the top of that page, you'll see the second line, and it begins on the first line, but the increase of the Barnstable County Fiscal 2020 Appropriation is $49,733. So that is the increase expected if this were to be made for this upcoming fiscal year. It should be noted in the next line that they anticipate this amount to increase by 5.28% every year. And so that is the impact on just the pension portion. Below in the table on that page, the last number in the table, which is the fiscal 2020 determined contribution, this is related to OPEB, and this is retirement health insurance benefits. That last number there, the $12,476, is the anticipated increase for just the retiree health insurance portion for just 2020, similar to the retirement. They anticipate this, that number will increase by 3% each year.
And lastly, thank you, Chris. Lastly, I did contact Mr. Quirk, Attorney Quirk had given me some information as it relates to the Barnstable County Retirement Board. They, they stay neutral on these issues as it relates, they see this as a town decision to make, and that obviously, based on however that decision lays out, the town would be assessed accordingly. Additionally, he had indicated to me in a communication that this isn't, it wasn't like this wasn't unexpected, they have seen a number of requests statewide from harbor masters groups across the Commonwealth. And I believe, and the folks from SEIU can correct me if I'm wrong here, but this probably picked up some support across the state as it relates when the state amended the legislation that allowed environmental police officers at the state level to enter into the group-four retirement program. So the article in front of you, the two choices that we would have is, one would be that the, if you were to support this article for town meeting, and town meeting would take a vote, would it be on just these four officers and this benefit would end with these four as they retire? Or would it be for any DNR officer perpetually into the future, like it would be with police or fire?
Those are the two concepts, but I just want to reiterate that the potential article language, if you so choose to move forward, is not yet finalized with legal counsel, and as been discussed, it's still dependent on retirement board acceptance and any other related Mass General laws.
So I think we could, Carl, if you could introduce the guests from SEIU, that'd be great.
I'll introduce them, I'll just write at the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board. I thank you for the opportunity to, to be here today.
Sorry we're so late.
No, I completely understand. That, that school issue was a tough one to tackle.
Yes.
But I appreciate the, the ability to represent and advocate for such a great group of natural resource officers, and I'd like to thank the town administrator for suggesting that we present on behalf of the Natural Resources Department in Article 21. I, I have some materials here myself, if I can approach the board to pass out.
You stay talking. I'll do the pass.
So ideally, I thought that we would do a prepared statement, and then we would go through the packets together, and.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so because, this is the prepared statement that we have, because of the duties and responsibilities of Yarmouth Natural Resource Officers are consistent with those of the Massachusetts Environmental Police and other public safety entities that are classified under Mass, Mass General Law as group-four retirement, we at SEIU 888 support a pension upgrade to group-four for the Town of Yarmouth Natural Resource Officers. The Town of Yarmouth Division of Natural Resource Officers' duties and responsibilities are consistent with the duties of Massachusetts Environmental Police Officers, whereas they enforce under Mass General Law with a focus on environmental law, particularly Chapter 90B, motorboats, other vessels and recreational vehicles, as well as 150 sections, 2-6, 6, shellfish, as well as 130 clams and lobster, and 131 inland fish game and other natural resources. We also enforce CMRs 321 and 269, hunting and firearm regulations. Under their police appointments, Yarmouth Natural Resource Officers can also enforce Chapter 90, motor vehicle, and all other state laws to back up and enhance Yarmouth PD if needed. In addition to state law, Yarmouth Natural Resource Officers enforce local laws, Town of Yarmouth bylaws, and ensure compliance with certain federal regulations such as Wetland Protection Act, Migratory Bird Act. Yarmouth Natural Resource Officers work hand-in-hand with the multiple public safety agencies at the local, state, and federal level. For example, we can be working jointly with US Fish and Wildlife Law Enforcement on an international case involving the Lacey Act and the illegal possession and transportation of wildlife across the fed, across the state and federal borders, which, which our natural resource officers have done. Or to be working with the US Coast Guard in complex search and rescue missions, as well as law enforcement issues, which we do, which they do routinely. Yarmouth Natural Resource Officers are routinely exposed to sick and injured wildlife, which creates danger, dangerous environments for the officers while trying to ensure public safety. Officers additionally deal with wildlife habitat management, shellfish management, and domestic animal control. Yarmouth Natural Resource Officers complete annual in-service training under the MPTC requirements, which include the standard for the use of force continuum. Yarmouth Natural Resource Officers attend firearm training at minimum twice a year with Yarmouth PD, meeting the MPTC firearms proficiency standards. Natural Resource Officers provide clean water, food, habitat, and protection from extreme events and opportunities from, for recreation and tourism. Climate change effects may often add additional services to natural resources provided. The Yarmouth Natural Resource Officers are the ones on the front lines of educating, planning, and protecting our natural resources. And that concludes our, our statement. And if we can just head into the packet a little bit, we filed a bill with Senator Julian Seer, and it's the, the bill number is 1498. And so Julian Seer is the chief sponsor, and Representative Tim Wayland is the, is the co-sponsor. And this, and it states, "Section 3 of Chapter 32 General Laws as appearing in 2016 official edition is hereby amended by inserting after the words 'recreational motor vehicles' in line 289 and the following words, 'Natural Resource Officers and Supervisors Employed by municipalities of Barnstable County and having duties similar to law enforcement officers and Department of Fisheries, Wildlife, and Recreation Vehicles.'" And then it leads us into, on that same, same side of the packet, this is a copy of Mass General Law, Section 32, Article 3, and it states, "Under Group Four, Division of Law Enforcement and Department of Fisheries, Wildlife, and Recreational Vehicles, Conservation Officers of the City of Havrell, having duties similar to law enforcement officers of the Department of Fisheries, Wildlife, and Recreational Vehicles, Employees of Massachusetts Port Authority, and at the General Edward Lawrence Logan Airport comprising permanent crash crewmen, fire control assistant, fire controlmen, members of police and fire department not classified in Group One. Any police officer of the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authorities, employees who regularly, compensation is paid by the United States from federal allocated to the Massachusetts National Guard and who are regularly and permanently employed under the control of the Military Department of the Commonwealth, and whose duties in such employment require substantially all normal working hours and those continued employment to be based upon federal recognition in the Massachusetts National Guard, members of Massachusetts." So we're arguing that on the other, on the other side, we have duties and responsibilities of environmental police officers, and that states, "Environmental police officers enforce all general laws of the Commonwealth focusing on protection of natural resource waterways, commercial, recreational, outdoor activities, and federal laws pertaining to the protection of the Commonwealth's natural resources." Environmental police officers' duties may include investigating accidents and/or fatalities involving hunting, boating, and recreational vehicles, providing law enforcement presence regarding the informant, public safety, and related educational activities within the assigned geographic area, performing basic maintenance and operation motor vehicles, motorboats, snowmobiles, off-road vehicles, and related safety equipment. This is right off their website. And then we also have the Natural Resource Director job descriptions, and what we have highlighted in these job descriptions, we feel are comparisons and like mirror images to duties and responsibilities that environmental police have, and they are recognized under, under group-four. Job environment with the exposure of various often hazardous and unpleasant weather conditions, risks associated with boating, rescue operations possible, contact with dangerous animals, contact with hazardous materials, risk associated with pump-out, operations including potential contact with human waste and chemical exposures. And then it says further down the, the document, enforcement of law regulations may be met with hostile response. On page two, "Including Natural Resource Management, Harbor Ways, Waterway Management, Shellfish Management, and Propagation, and Animal Control and Protection. Enforces Laws and Regulations Relating to Natural Resource Harbor Ways, Waterways, Hunting Animals, Control Issues, Citations to Violators, Provides Testimony for Court Proceedings, and Other Legal Actions." The special requirements on, over on page three are requirements that they, that our natural resource officers have to maintain biannually, if, you know, definitely annual license, licenses renewals have to be, are required. Must obtain and maintain firearm license, must obtain, maintain special police appointment, must obtain and maintain harbor master appointment and certifications, must obtain and maintain shellfish, shellfish constable appointment and maintain certifications, must obtain and maintain conservation officer appointments. So this document is consistent with the, the, the job description for the supervisor, as well as it's consistent for the natural resource officer themselves. So we at the local, we're, we just, we feel that since the precedent was already set, you know, under Mass General Law, and, and EPOs, environmental police officers are already recognized under group-four, we, we feel strongly that the duties and responsibilities that our natural resource officers do on a daily basis are consistent and, you know, the same as EPOs. So we basically, we, you know, respectfully ask you to consider, you know, a pension upgrade for our folks from group-one to group-four.
If I could just quickly add, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, what's not included in the packet is a, a letter from Senator Seer, I heard from Senator Seer in his office, and they wanted to make sure that they submitted their letter of support, very much like Representative Wayland's. I'll print it out and pass it around, but just wanted to let the record know.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I'm just, I, go ahead.
Where to start? So this was filed by Senator Seer in January.
2016.
No, 2019. And.
It's a refile from, actually Representative Wayland filed it last year.
Right, and when will this be acted upon?
It'll reach committee in mid-April, so if there's any language that, that you've, that the board would like, you know, to amend, like we can at the local, if there's anything that you don't agree with in this language, we can amend it before committee, but once it reaches committee, it's, it's done. And that's, you know, hopefully, we would like to bring our, our natural resource officers in for testimony, you know, in front of legislators.
What's the, what's the effect if this is passed? So, does this make?
It'll amend the Mass General Law, you know, it's under, under group-four. It'll add Yarmouth Natural Resource Officers to Article Three.
All natural resource officers of Barnstable County?
Let's, how, how, specifically how the City of Havrell is, is, you know, identified?
Yep.
Natural resource officers from Yarmouth will, will be amended to that, that portion.
That's what this bill says.
What's it be, what's, I don't understand how the term recreational motor vehicle is used in these documents. What does that mean?
Boar wheelers, dirt bikes, off-road vehicles.
So it really does mean a vehicle, I didn't know if that was a fancy term for something else.
If I can just add, that was the language prior to the Mass Environmental Police, they worked for the Office of, of Department of Fish and Wildlife, Recreational Boating and Off-Road Vehicle. So it's old language that's, that's still on the books.
How is the rest of the state treated? So this is, this is something that will impact Barnstable County. Are there, is there similar, similar legislation covering the rest of the state?
Well, only, it's, it's, only Havrell is, is recognized right now, but our folks are, you know, are unique because they have, you know, they are currently group, under group-one retirement, but they have all of the same abilities as EPOs, you know, so.
No, I, I think it's clear that.
Yeah.
You don't belong in group-one. Maybe you do if you want a group you under, all others not otherwise classified, but Maybe you do if you want to group you under all others, not otherwise classified, but I don't, I don't think that's the, the right place for you. And whereas Group Four consists of public safety officers, and it goes on to name officials, employees, police officers, firefighters, and certain corrections such as those things, but not limited to. So, I think you clearly fit into Group Four, you clearly don't fit into Group One. My next question is, give me in simple terms, and this is for Dan or Chris, assuming we keep the, the department size at what it is now, four, is it four?
Four, yes.
What is the cost, what is the annual cost to upgrade four employees from one to four?
It would be approximately sixty-three thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty, and that would increase by about five to six percent every year thereafter.
Additionally, you have to be concerned with Group Four because they can retire out at fifty-five, so they'd be potentially on town health insurance from fifty-five to sixty-five when they'd slide to Medicare, so there's additional cost to that. The other issue associated with the conversation is that, depending upon how long they stay on the job with the agreements within the collective bargain agreement, the salary will continue to go up, which affects the number, so every two years, we have to get a new actuary statement because every two years, the salary scale's separate or different, and it increases. So, the number that Chris gives you tonight is the number for this moment in time, right now, based on the salary scale that they're presently in with their age of service. The other thing that I think is important to take a look at is what happens for the beneficiaries, that's why I put the memo together. Option A, B, and C has an impact as well to the town because, under Option A, which is for the benefit, there is no beneficiary provision, so when the retiree dies, the benefit dies with the retiree. Option B is, is a special actuary that has to be done to calibrate your withholding such that your surviving beneficiary will be able to have some percentage of your benefit if you were to die for a period of time, and the chance there is if you have a spouse with exceptionally good genes, they could outlive their benefit. So, many situations like that, they opt to Option C, which again, causes another problem to occur, you have to have another actuary done, they take the, the annual assessment down a little bit, but say the, the member dies, the beneficiary could be on the books for another twenty-five or thirty years potentially, so...
Isn't that, isn't that all part of the actuarial calculation?
It is, but the calculations are done every two years, but when they go into those options, before they go into those options, particularly with C, based on the, they do a, a more further analysis based on your family history and whatnot, they do a pretty thorough analysis to find out how, how much they should deduct the annual benefit such that the survivor won't outlast the payments. So, it gets complicated, so I can't answer you a question like that, I can only give you what the number's going to be based on the contract that we have in place today, their present state of salary, and that's the impact to the Barnstable County assessment.
What's the pool of employees that are in the actuarial calculation?
Well, it's the entire Barnstable County, but in this particular case, because they're Group Four, their, their payment is accelerated a little bit because of the higher salary draw.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I ask, is the sixty-three thousand for the group or is that individually?
It's for the group of four.
For the group of four. The group of four, we have one, one member that is eligible to retire within like two and a half or three years, and then it's, and then it's the, the following member closest to retirement is like ten years, and then, and then the, we have, we have two other natural resource officers that are, that are fairly young, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't be, you know, eligible to retire, you know, within twenty, twenty-five years down the road.
One of those were hired after that April two thousand twelve, the, Tim Parsons hired in September two thousand twelve.
Then it's worth mentioning that one of the members doesn't collect medical benefits, I, I believe it's under his spouse's.
Does that sixty-eight thousand include the training and the OPAB and all?
Sixty-eight thousand includes the retirement and pension benefit and the OPAB.
So, the, the training cost is...
It's a separate...
It's sev...
So, the idea was, you know, how much effort and energy goes into an initial hire and then an annual hire, and I would argue that with the firearm condition, it, it does cause cost on an initial basis and an annual basis for training versus a civilianized operation that wouldn't have the same type of scenario. There would be some training for a civilian, but not to that extent.
But under the same conditions that you have police officers out on the street, that, do you want guys trying to save people off in a boat that are sixty years old? I'll be honest with you, yeah, you know, I'm sixty years old, I'm not going to be out here trying to rescue somebody in a boat, you know, and that's the type of stuff that you, you don't want. You want a younger person in that job, same as you do with your police department, that's why police departments are Group Four.
We sincerely think that this, this, this group of natural resource officers is a complete asset to the town of Yarmouth, you know, with all of the duties and responsibilities that they have, and how they're able to assist Yarmouth PD, and, and how they're sincerely able to protect our waterways, our harbor, harbor systems, and, and all of the conservation land that makes Yarmouth so beautiful.
I'd just like to say, I don't think that's in question here. By any comments that I make or about this, I think that it's very clear that we have very talented, and we're very lucky to have natural resource officers that we have. I'm confused about the process. I... So, this is the first time I've seen Julian's bill. The rest of it would have been initiated from a home rule petition if any change was to happen, as far as I knew. So, this bill is not a home rule petition, it's basically, if it goes into effect, it doesn't matter what we do, it's going to happen anyway, so I'm trying to figure out why we're having this conversation.
So, initially...
We would, we would prefer to have the town on our side, and back up that they believe their natural resources, our officers deserve to be in Group Four. You're right, the way the bill is written, we really don't have to be here, but we respect the town, that we, we want you on board with us.
Well, if you respected the town, you would have come here first, instead of trying to file bills by our legislators, and if it was really a town decision, that's what would have happened.
It's really not a town decision.
Right, well, then that's my point, then.
If we wanted to...
I know.
It was, you know, it, it fell short the last legislative session, and we wanted this legislative session, just to, you know, to have multiple bites of the apple for our, our resource officers.
Well, I think, I think normally, when we deal with our employees who are represented by a union, we negotiate the benefits. This is effectively adding a cost of an additional employee to our payroll, and that's, that's a significant impact. We, our board and our town requires that this board vote and bring to town meeting every increase in employment in the town, because employment costs are so sensitive to the budget of the town, and we negotiate those situations with our unions. I, 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 I just think this process of coming through the back door is very distasteful.
Well, like I said before, it, it, it fell, I'm newly elected, and I, I, you know, I've been on the job for eight months, I, I know that it, it fell, fell short the last legislative session, so we ultimately, you know, we wanted to be able to think outside the box this legislative session, and with no disrespect to the board at all.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, the Wayland letter of March nineteenth says, and I quote, "We have made it clear to SEIU Local Eight-eight-eight that as a prerequisite to filing any legislation to reassign Yarmouth Natural Resource Officers to Retirement Group Four, it is necessary that they seek local approval through petitioning the Yarmouth Board of Selectment to place an article on the annual town meeting warrant, and said article being supported by town meeting voters." So, I'm a little bit confused, it doesn't sound like it's an optional thing.
There's a bill...
The House bill is a different bill.
The bill from Julian Seer has been filed. Tim's bill has not been filed, was filed, and then, and then taken off, knowing that it's supposed to come from here.
Is this the old bill, Tim's old, his bill from the last session?
I think he would refile it if a home rule petition or support from the town, but, but this, this is new today.
Let's back up and listen to the history of, I, I think, Tim has filed this twice, and we have failed to address it.
This is the first time we've, since I've been sitting here, that we've had a conversation about it.
Conversation I've had with Tim. Tim has done this on two occasions, and there's a reason that it hasn't gone anywhere, is because you were never made aware that it was filed by Tim. So, this year, Tim said, "I'm not going to file it until you vote on it, because I've already done it twice, and it's gone nowhere, because the town hasn't acted on it." So, I think my understanding is this year, Tim said, "You go first, and then when you invest the time, I will attempt to invest the time."
He's doing his own thing.
That appears to be accurate.
What's that?
That appears to be very accurate, you know, um...
Maybe we should find out why this, this has been filed twice in previous years by Tim?
Yes.
And why was it never, why were we never made aware of it?
So, I was first made aware of it shortly after my arrival in twenty seventeen, I met with representatives of the natural resources, including the director, members of the SEIU. At that time, I informed them that it can't be acted on by the legislature as written, it has to start with a home rule petition, I communicated that in verbal conversation with the chairman at the time of the board, and I fully at some point anticipated that there'd be some time in the future this would come up. To our surprise, the Senate bill got filed to go around town meeting, such that it includes Barnstable County, as opposed to the way Tim had impression. My conversations with Representative Wayland going back to two years ago and as recently as this fall, was that, you know, it needs to get some support at the board level because it's a home rule request, has to originate here, and until we get something on that, it's not, it can't advance anywhere, there's nothing to talk about. So, that's when it became, I had a conversation with you, Mr. Tally, and you asked if we could put this placeholder on there for a future discussion, and because of the way we're required to get the placeholders up by January thirtieth, to get some article in front of town meeting, the time in which we had that conversation, it's became the natural time to put the placeholder up there. Is, is the process somewhat been backwards, there's no question, but it started quite a while ago.
Do the House and the Senate bills essentially accomplish the same thing, it's just one needs local support first, and then the, and the other doesn't?
The other one's changing the statute, which would basically make it in, in effect for all Barnstable County.
So, the House bill hasn't been filed yet.
Without any action from the town.
The House bill is not filed, it just...
If the House bill is on a home rule petition, it would just change Yarmouth, but he'd have to write the bill that way.
I'd like to clarify some of this, I worked with Dan Hoffer, who was the, Tom's predecessor at SEIU. When he was describing this pension upgrade and how we go about it, he recommended a home rule petition, and that meant we needed to get local support. They said that Rep. Wayland's office sponsored the bill, and we need to get local support. So, last spring, it was at the Irish Village at the, in the Benton's House breakfast.
Pledge against...
White Ribbon Day.
White Ribbon Day. So, that's when we realized we needed to get local support, me being ignorant to the process, didn't realize that would be, have to be at town meeting, I thought we could just get local support from, from the board without town meeting, I didn't, I didn't realize that. When we asked town administrator about it, he said that we had, it was too late to get it on the warrant for last year's town meeting, so at that point, I actually spoke to Rep. Wayland at that same breakfast, and he said, "Well, I'll just refile it next year." So, I'll take a lot of the blame for the ball being dropped there, we missed the opportunity to get it on the warrant for last year's town meeting. They had a change of hands at SEIU, Tom became the political director, and we tried to pick up the pieces and move forward from there, so that's...
Tom, you're a lucky guy.
If that clarifies it at all, there was definitely some missteps probably on my part, trying to run with it, just being ignorant to the process.
So, can I, can I just ask a couple of questions about the... Maybe we don't even want to have the discussion, I don't know, but...
Well, you know, Julian may have filed the bill, but he's asking us if we are supportive. If you're opposed, please advise.
Falmouth...
It said, it, it says, personally, I believe this change is appropriate, should be made, however, when legislation is germane primarily to a municipality I represent, I aim to advance those bills through the committee process and Senate with the support of the relevant select board.
You'd think you'd do that first, but that's just an observation.
He was, he was invited to this proceeding this evening, as well as Representative Crocker.
But am I correct to say that the bills are already been filed, his bill?
We had to get the bills filed, we were told, we both do, all right?
There was a deadline.
I'm, I'm a retired state employee who's now the political...
Retired fifty-five, or?
No, I'm Group One. That, we both took over recently, and we were advised by our...
Lobbyist.
Lobbyist, that we had to get the bills filed, and they had to be filed by January second or third, and...
And we just went a different direction, only because it felt short...
And we were advised to go that direction, we weren't doing it...
Past legislative session.
To insult anybody.
No, I understand, but...
We're doing it under advice of a guy who does this for a living, you know, his whole life.
We have a massive legislative agenda.
Not for the eight months that we've been doing it.
And we had to get under a certain deadline, and this was one of our bills that we filed.
This indicates it was filed on the eighteenth of January, so...
Yes.
Well, I'm interested in how Falmouth operates, because I know Falmouth is one of the other communities where I think they have similar responsibilities to what you do in terms of having weapons and...
Correct, Falmouth, Falmouth is modeled after the Natural Resource Department, they've reorganized down there, they have modeled after the Yarmouth Natural Resource Department. Also Plymouth...
What does that mean in terms of what group they're in?
Their, their department organization has natural resources, harbor master, waterways, shellfish, and animal control, they also are armed officers.
What group are they in?
They are, currently, they're, they're in Group One.
Okay.
Same with the town of Wareham and the town of Plymouth, they are also all in Group One.
So, how do we, I guess in my mind, I'm, I'm playing this out, and you're, it, it probably doesn't change your title, but I guess in effect, you're having two, I guess what I would consider law enforcement chiefs, so to speak, and I think that that's problematic. So, how do towns that have, have that, you know, I guess I'm trying to think about how that would work in terms of, I, I know you guys operate well with the police department, but we have one chief law enforcement officer, and by an effect, I think, of making the change, potentially, we would have two, and I'm not sure how that's aligned in terms of hierarchy, I know that you have a different...
Sure.
You have a different, I guess, you know, natural resources, but you still have authority under that group that, or would that change your authority, I guess, is the question?
I, I don't believe it will change our authority. We've been operating, the Yarmouth Natural Resources has been operating the same way for over forty years. My understanding is the only employee that has retired from the Yarmouth Division Natural Resources was my predecessor, Mo Johnson. So we don't have a high retirement rate within this, this department. People move on and move up because it is such a small, small department. We've, you know, we have a number of local police officers that were Yarmouth Natural Resource Officers. We have Border Patrol, federal agents that have worked for us in one capacity or another that have moved on. It's, it's a thankless job. It's twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year with only four employees, not sixty, like the police department. We cover the same amount of roads, we cover the same amount of land mass, but we also cover an additional sizable area of water body with our staff. We also do it with some part timers. So how it has worked all these years, and it's worked very well, we've had, you know, four police chiefs we've worked with under this. We take care of the environmental and maritime law enforcement. We are there to enhance and support the Yarmouth Police Department on land-related issues. That's why we train with them. If they have, for some reason, we see a vehicle operating erratically, we call it into police dispatch and see if they want us to pull that vehicle over, or do they have another cruiser? So.
But in terms of pulling, that's, I guess that's where my problem is. Pulling people over, you have, I guess, from my perspective, there's a liability to the town when you have officers with weapons. So it makes me nervous. I understand the need for it in natural resources when you're in the woods, a hunter or something like that. So I'm not sure how you delineate that, but I think that clearly there needs to be a delineation.
Yeah, and we delineate that out of policy. We do not do police officer work unless the police department asks us to do so.
Only to assist.
You know, we go through the Reserve Intermittent Police Academy.
But it's not the same.
It's not the.
Of academy that our police officers go to.
All those sworn.
Has the same exact liability.
All those same sworn officers that go through the Reserve Intermittent Academy has the same authorities under Mass General Law, under their, their police appointments. But we, we do not cross that line. It's been an understanding for all these years.
This isn't going to change their job title. This isn't going to change how, who they report to. This isn't going to change how they operate. The only thing it's going to do is allow them for handling a dangerous job is retire early.
We, we do have an MOU that we've been working on between Natural Resources and the police department. It's been, it's gone back and forth. I think that's something we need to reopen and look at. I think that would assist in clarifying and addressing your concerns, Tracy.
How many years into the contract are you, you're all in the same SEIU union?
Yes.
Yes.
And your contract needs to be, I would imagine, would have to be renegotiated based on this change?
And it's in a year and a half.
I don't know if the retirement change would need to be negotiated.
I haven't never been negotiated.
But the regular contracts are, have already been done and they're good for, I believe, two years.
So you don't think that this would impact the contract or your, your, there's no, there's no mention of retirement or any of that stuff in your contract that would have to be amended?
No.
So what about the potential budget change to this? Are you prepared to fund the impact to your budget?
I think that's what we need to look at and to see where that funding capability may come from. We've been level funded, you know, you know, right along, and we haven't asked for any increases with the exception of contractual agreements. So if we are looking at budget cuts to make up for this, I don't know where those budget cuts could come from.
You have other questions? No.
Chair. Mark.
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, Mike.
You have questions?
I guess we're considering what to do with the article. I don't know what the wishes of the board are at this point.
We could move the table if you need more information, maybe.
Well, I'm not sure that we'll act on it this evening.
I guess I'm in a, we haven't planned for this, so I kind of feel like it might be a little bit, I know that you've been working on it a long time. Unfortunately, it's the first time we've seen it. So in terms of, if we put it forward to the town.
And it wasn't our intent to disrespect the board or what's.
If we put it forward to the town and it passed, then that leaves us in a situation where, so I don't know if we wait to see what happens with Julian's bill and revisit that, and then we talk about it for next year's budget. I'm not sure how we, how we do it. I'm not.
Well, so.
Or prepared this year, unfortunately.
Part of it is related to what Senator's commentary is about what the board, whether or not the board supports it or not. As the bill stands, as he filed it, it would be something that's for the county, so if it were to pass, we would just have to work that dollar value into the assessment that we would get and fund it accordingly. If he's saying to us in that communication that he values the position of the board on that, and if the board didn't support it, he would revoke it. I don't know if he would do that. So it's hard to know for sure what the impact is.
Do we know if any other boards?
This is the first. I had recently just seen Senator Seer's legislation. I was focused on Representative Whalen's legislation that talked about a local origination because I was not aware that it was a countywide conversation. Have you talked to any other towns that are affected by this in the county?
We have not.
Yeah, so that was kind of news to us as well, and the actuary just came in as it relates to the dollar value associated with it. So we did know because of the school situation that, you know, there's going to be some final tweaks to the budget at some point very soon in the future, but, you know, we're going to need some guidance as to what the board's discretion is related to that. It's a lot of money to.
Well, from my point of view, it's really a county issue.
Yeah.
And I think to some degree, we should probably be dealing with it more regionally since this is the proposal to change this countywide. So I think it, I think before we act unilaterally, I think it certainly would be helpful to know what some of the other towns are doing. I don't know if there's been any town manager discussion.
I don't know if they're even aware of it.
Okay.
We.
Probably we need to have a conversation with Julian.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We really would like the board's support and the community's support. So if it's a matter of withdrawing this and putting it on a future town meeting when all this is hashed out, I don't think we'd be opposed to that. Just in Julian's letter, which I have not seen, he's urging for support, and if you have some issues, then I'd much rather work those issues out and move it forward at a later date than have something go through and get everybody off guard and possibly not have that support.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, you know, due to the perhaps limited and conflicting information that we have, that we take no position for or against Julian's article. We wait till we see how that plays out. The, the control may be taken out of our hands, may not need our support, we may not need to take any action at all, but if the legislation should fail and we want to reopen the discussion at the local petition level.
Ask Julian for a grant, you mean?
I'm sorry?
Ask Julian for a grant to cover an unfunded mandate.
We can have that discussion later.
So the process up at the State House would be, this bill will, will go to committee in mid-April.
Yep.
We'll bring people in for testimonial, and then, and then in October, you know, it's, we'll, from a union perspective, we'll try to get it out of, Senate weighs a meeting favorably, and then the more we push, hopefully it gets to the floor for a vote.
So it would go to a vote October, November then?
Yes.
So there's no reason to put, to try to put this off till fall, and it just makes sense, more sense to see what happens, and if we want to revisit the idea, we can revisit it for next year. So, yeah, my motion.